Good evening. This meeting of the Arlington Select Board for Monday, March 8th, 2021, is being called to order. As a preliminary matter, this is John Heard, the Select Board Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Diane Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Steve De Corsi?
Yes.
Len Diggins?
Yes.
Dan Dunn?
Yes.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Adam Chapdeline?
Yes.
Doug Heim?
Yes.
And Board Administrator Ashley Marr is participating remotely. Good evening. This open meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Order, Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of the novel coronavirus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus and reduce risk of COVID-19 illness, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which can find posted with the Agenda Materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Even if members of the public do not provide comments, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care to not screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please also take care to adjust your screen or device name if you would like to speak. In order for us to recognize speakers appropriately and develop acronyms is helpful for our participants to see your full first and last name when calling upon you rather than a nickname. All the meeting materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the Novus Agenda Dashboard. We recommend the members in the public follow the agenda as posted on Novus unless the Chair notes otherwise. We now turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. This meeting will feature opportunities for public comment on certain items. After members have spoken, I, as the Chair, will afford public comment opportunities as follows. First, I will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Please keep in mind that all participants and members of the public must be recognized by the Chair before speaking. Finally, each vote tonight will be conducted by roll, call, vote. All right, and that takes us to the next item on our agenda. Discussion and Approval: Fiscal Year 2022 Water Sewer Rates. Mr. Chapdeline?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I will ask Mr. Radamacher and Mr. Poehler to give a more in-depth presentation, but I want to start with an introduction to just describe to the Board what we'll be asking the Board to do tonight. In broad strokes, we'll be asking the Board to consider voting favorably for rate increases for both water and sewer rates. The Board will likely recall that this year will be the second year in what is a three-part or three-year strategy to reduce what we call the MWRA debt shift, which is money that was raised on the tax rate but used to subsidize or reduce water and sewer rates. Going back a few years with the elimination, excuse me, the cap of the federal, state, and local tax deduction, keeping that MWRA debt shift in place became much less beneficial to Arlington taxpayers and ratepayers. So the Board started several years ago asking myself, Mr. Radamacher, and Mr. Poehler to develop a plan for the Board's consideration of how to reduce and eventually eliminate that debt shift. Ultimately, the Board settled on a three-year strategy so that there wouldn't be rate shock or dramatic rate impacts in any one given year, and the ultimate plan was decided upon to do it over the course of three years. And again, this is the second year as part of that three-year plan. One last thing I want to point out before asking Mike to provide a little further detail is that though the percentage increases that Mike will detail are undoubtedly large, the water sewer budget proposed for FY '22 only represents a 2.7% increase in expenses. So for anybody listening at home, the increases that we're asking the Board to vote tonight are not based on increased expenses for operating the water and sewer budget, but again, rather, they're based on the way we are collecting. So arguably, we will be collecting more water and sewer dollars, but less impact on the tax rate. So this is not more or new money being asked to be raised, but shifting how we're collecting a set amount of money. So with that said, Mike, would you like to walk through in any greater detail that you think is necessary to explain the memo you've provided?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chapdeline. Mike Radamacher, Director of Public Works. Good evening, Select Board. Adam pretty very well summed up where we're at and where we're heading with this. And as the memo stated, the increases are entirely, the majority of the increases is based upon the shifting or the elimination of the shift of tax dollars to the Enterprise Fund. I'm sure you've all read the memo, but just as a summary, we're looking to increase the water rates by 12.75% and the sewer rates by just under 12%. And those values were calculated based on expected expenses and offsetting that with necessary rate revenue.
Thank you. And anything additional before I go to the Board?
Sandy, do you have anything going on?
All right, Mr. Corsi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, first of all, I'll move approval of the rates contained in the memorandum and just a couple of additional comments. And thank you, Mr. Chapdeline, for discussing what really is a shift of how revenue is earned in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. And for those of you who've been following this the past couple of years, through fiscal '20, there was about $5.5 million that was a subsidy from real estate taxes to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. That went down to $3.6 million for fiscal '21. It's going down to $1.8 million for fiscal '22. And you see it in rates because this amount is a greater percentage of the revenues for the Water and Sewer Fund than it is as a percentage of total real estate taxes. But for the members of the Board, if you remember back in December when Mr. Tierney came in to talk about the tax rate and had us vote and approve the tax rate, we approved the tax rate of $11.34 for this past year. If we hadn't shifted additional or we hadn't decreased the shift from the real estate taxes to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, that rate would have been about $11.50. So that's where you see it in the difference. It's in the tax rate. You're going to see higher water and sewer rates, but as Mr. Chapdeline and Mr. Radamacher have indicated, it's only a 2.7% increase in the total expenses of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. It's just a difference in how it's collected, and we feel that this is a better way to present what's actually being paid for water and sewer. It's more open and transparent. And it's the ratepayers that are paying this rather than the taxpayers subsidizing these costs. And then there are some ratepayers that don't pay real estate taxes, exempt organizations, for example, that will be participating fully. And it does really give a truer indication of what the expenses are for water and sewer. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. So I am happy to second this. I'm happy to support it, and I think I'm going to say it in a slightly different way, which is I actually think that these rate changes are about fairness. And the reason we're moving it off the tax rate and onto the water bill is because it is related to your water usage. And so the more water you use, the more you pay. And that wasn't true exactly in the old system. It is now closer to true, and it'll be even closer yet next year. And on the subject of fairness, we also, I received an email forwarded from the Board's office just this afternoon. I'm not sure that everyone will have had a chance to read it. But there was a resident who was upset, I think is the correct word, that they're charged for sewage rates even though they're just watering their lawn. And the argument goes, you know, "I'm not paying for sewage treatment for this water that I'm using to water my lawn. Why are you charging me a sewer rate?" And on the face of it, that makes a lot of sense. You say, "Okay, you're right. We shouldn't be charging you for the sewer rate." But the thing is, is that in the end, that does come out to a closer number, about fairness. And the reason is because a lot of the cost of building our water infrastructure is, a lot of the cost is needing to provide water during peak usage, and it is particularly about things like watering your lawn. And so while the label is wrong, we shouldn't necessarily call it a sewage rate. I really have no problem with charging people significantly for watering their lawn. It's a luxury. It is not a necessity, and it is something that shouldn't be borne by your neighbors. If you're the person, if you want to water your lawn, you should be paying for it, not your neighbors. And so I'm going to, I look forward to the day where we have more flexibility in how we charge and calculate our sewage, water and sewer rates such that we can more better understand what our peak is and perhaps charge people as a fraction of their peak usage and things like that. But until then, I'm comfortable that even though we're charging sewage rates on lawn watering, we are in fact charging a closer to fair rate with this change than we ever have before. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm going to assume in Mr. De Corsi's motion, seconded by Mr. Dunn. And I was just wondering, maybe Mr. Radamacher or someone else would speak to this, that inherent in that is that pending the future projections, sort of remaining the course, if they don't, that this will come back up for review? That's my first question.
Mike Radamacher, Director of Public Works. I'm assuming you're talking about the assumptions we made in the rate calculation. And those were conservative. If anything holds true, I feel that we would be able to bring them down and not necessarily up. So if for some reason we find we can be a little more advantageous, we could come to the Board with that, right?
Okay, and my second question would be, I'm still unmuted, but this is a three-year projection and sort of an outlook into a fourth, if just taking the worst possible case scenario that come that fourth year, that it's really skewed radically in terms of having to make larger increases. What steps are we contemplating if that should be the case? My assumption is we're taking that what we're seeing over the course of these three years will continue on in year four, five, and six if it doesn't.
Go ahead, Adam. I was going to take a shot at that, if that's okay, Mike. I mean, I think the two major variables that we contend with in the water sewer budget are the MWRA assessments. That's the dramatic lion's share of what we have to pay for. Mike can speak better to what the long-range outlook is, but my understanding is they've been managing their debt and their expenses quite well. So shocks in terms of our MWRA assessment is probably limited risk. The other side of risk for us is if usage was to go way down, we would likely still have much of that fixed cost from the MWRA because it's based much more on the debt they're paying for Deer Island and the water system than it is for the actual water there, with the water that we're receiving or sewer that we're giving. But if our usage went down for any number of reasons, that could impact us negatively in terms of total collected and then mean that rates would have to go higher to be able to pay the bills. I don't know, and Mike, you could speak to this a little more. If this pandemic in the resulting economic impact hasn't dramatically seen usage come down, I'm not sure that there's a high risk for usage to come down, although you can't rule anything out. So I think we're in fairly good position to be able to stick somewhere in the vicinity of Mike's estimates. But Mike, if I've missed anything on that, please feel free.
No, you explained that very well. I do feel the MWRA is doing a very good job, especially under the oversight of the MWRA Executive Committee, keeping them on their toes. The Executive Committee is made up of member communities, which comments and makes recommendations on MWRA rates and has the community's interests to heart. So the MWRA and the Advisory Board have been very good at trying to reduce the assessment increases year over year and have been bringing those down. But Adam is also correct that, so aside from that, our biggest unknown is use. In a year of drought, people use more water, and in a wet year, they use less water, and there's not too much we can do about that. But other than just ride those peaks and valleys and try to average them out over the year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Diggins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just a couple of small things. You know, I respect that letter. I thought the premise was interesting, and that was that keeping the lawn green helps property values and does a service to the town by doing that. Yeah, I see the argument, but I think maybe it should make us think about changing our mindset about that. Because water, we should conserve water. And we're fortunate most years where we don't have a drought, but certainly when a drought is severe, then people urge not to water their lawns, and they turn brown, and brown's okay, you know? But like I said, I understand that was the premise of it. The second thing is just requests. I mean, humble, respectful requests to those who do our visual presentations on that graph for the community charge comparisons. I assume the blue is for water. That would make sense. And the yellow is for sewer. That's okay. I didn't see it labeled, and that might be outside of mine. But the more important thing is, whereas it's easy for me to compare the rates on the blue because they're all starting from zero and going to the right, for the yellow, it's hard for me to compare them because the bases aren't the same. And so you can kind of gauge which one is larger than the other. But if there's like a numerical value in those who help me to compare them, I know we had the tables, but a lot of times I see these charts, and I'm not able to say anything because, well, you know, I'm just not in a position to say something. But this one, this case, I am. So I just humbly request that we maybe format those a little differently so it's easier for people like me to read freedom. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. And just one question, then one comment. So the rate's a little, the request is a little lower than projected because of reduction, the MWRA assessment due to COVID. Is that a permanent adjustment, or should we assume that that assessment will be readjusted next year?
They, that's kind of like the new bar. So it will just, I don't expect them to jump back up. That's the new benchmark, and it'll grow from there.
So we think that our request for an increase next year might be a little lower than projected as well?
No, the future increases are built upon growing this assessment currently.
Okay. All right. And then to whatever extent we can have, I mean, this is an excellent synopsis of why we're asking for this rate increase. And we discussed this at length about a year ago when we talked about the debt shift. And a year before that, when we talked about the debt shift and so on. So if we could put this together in some sort of press release that is available to people, I think that'd be helpful because we certainly know we're going to, as soon as this hits, there's going to be talk about how the Select Board increased your water rates by 12%. And I think to have this information available would be really helpful to help spread to people, to show why we're doing it and the benefit that they're getting.
Mr. Chair, we can absolutely do that. No question.
Yep. All right. So with that, we have a motion to approve by Mr. De Corsi, seconded by Mr. Dunn. Attorney Heim?
Mr. Chair, I forget. Is this a public hearing or no? Okay, thank you.
Attorney Heim?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. All right, and that takes us to our consent agenda. Item number three, Request Contracted Drain Layer License, Rafali Construction Corp., Gerato, A Rafali, 233 Borough Street, Swamp Scott, Massachusetts, 01907. And for approval, ACAC Utility Box Painting Project. Adria Arch, Commission for Arts and Culture, and Laurie Bogdan, Commission for Arts and Culture. Mr. Chapdeline, do we have anyone to speak on the ACAC Utility Box Painting Project?
I see Adria and Laurie here. Would you like me to ask them if they'd like to say a few words?
Yep. All right, here they come.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for hearing us. There we go. And yeah, we're into our, I think it's the fifth year of doing utility box or switch box paintings. We're calling them utility boxes now. So I wanted to introduce Laurie Bogdan, who's a new member of our Arlington Public Garden, Arlington Commission for Arts and Culture Group. And Laurie is going to take over running this project with my help this year. So I'm going to let her talk. Laurie, you're on.
Hi. So here we are in the next phase of this project. We have identified several boxes that we're interested in working on this year, and that's going forth to the next level of approval. And we have started reaching out to the arts community to go through the jury process to choose designs for this year's boxes. And we are open for any questions if you have them.
All right, I'll go to the Board for any comments. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Adria, and now Laurie, for signing on to this. This has been one of the projects that, if you look at it in totality, it's a small microcosm of the town, but I can tell you how many people have commented on how much they appreciate the art, and that is just distributed throughout the town. East Arlington, the center, and the heights. So and the other thing that I know people have expressed to me was that you have in, I assume Laurie will continue to incorporate all of the different groups, you know, starting with our youth groups, moving on up to participate in this project. So I want to thank you, Adria, and now Laurie, for continuing this really. I know when you're standing, walking by a Mass Ave or waiting for a bus or talking to a neighbor or getting ready to go to church, this artwork is definitely appreciated. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval on the consent agenda.
Thank you. And Ms. Diggins?
I will second it, and I really loved the boxes too. And I went to the webpage looking at the utility boxes. I saw a bunch of pictures, but I did not see this one.
Oh, that's actually not a part of this particular project, though. That was commissioned separately by Friends of Magnolia Park.
Oh, that's interesting. That's interesting. So are there any others that aren't, you know, part of the program? That's the only one? Interesting. I did happen to meet that artist. And I was, at the time, thinking I was still going to be doing my Art in Arlington series, and that's how I met you, Adria. But, you know, things just got really busy, and now I just don't have time for it, but I will come back to that series. But these are great, whoever does them. They're great. And it is good to see this kind of art around town. I actually have some ideas about, maybe ways that we can integrate this into some fun projects. And because you know I enjoy working with you, let's touch base sometime and talk about them. So, yeah, cool. And I know I've been talking to Adria Arch, Adria, Laurie, you know, but I look forward to meeting you in person sometime and/or virtually and working through some ideas, hatching them out, all right?
That's great.
Okay, cool.
Ms. Diggins?
Great program. Happy to support.
Thank you. Mr. Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and yeah, thank you, Adria and Laurie. This program has really made a big difference, and I had some people comment to me. The box on Brooks Ave was just replaced with a new box, and people noticed the the old artwork there is no longer there with the removal of the box. But you can tell people really notice it, and just one comment, looks like you may have some landscaping work you need to do on Appleton and Florence. So good luck with that in addition to the art.
Thanks.
Yeah, and of course, I'm happy to support this. Arlington, I think, is known for public art in general, and this is one of the events that I really enjoy. I have a box right across from my office in the center, and it's always interesting to see what people come up with, and you're always surprised and always amazed. So happy to support this again, and thank you both for coming and explaining the program to us. With that, Attorney Heim, we have a motion to approve by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Diggins.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Ms. Diggins spoke.
Thank you both.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your support.
Definitely. Thank you.
All right, and that takes us to item number five on our agenda for approval, Food Vendor License. Fatouche, 142 Massachusetts Avenue, Karam T. Tuma. Mr. Tuma with us? All right. Attorney Heim? Attorney Leoni?
Good evening. I'm here with
Is it Tony? Should I be promoting Tony?
Yes, he goes by Tony.
Thank you.
I'm here with Karam Tuma Tony, as we know him. He's wanting to, he's going to be right with us in a second. I see Tony can unmute.
Yeah.
So we're looking to get Tony licensed for a little restaurant down in East Arlington next to Za, where he's going to be doing takeout Mediterranean and American food, strictly takeout, no eat-in dining. And he's really excited about it. You've seen his menu. And he's going to be outfitting that place from scratch. So it's going to be a nice, new, clean place, and he's wanting to get approval. No alcohol, just food.
All right.
If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
All right, Mrs. De Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'll move approval subject to the conditions. I have no questions. I just want to wish you the best of luck with the new venture.
Mr. Diggins?
I will be thrilled to approve it. I did look at the menu, you know, and I just recently discovered jalapeno hummus, and I just can't get enough of it, and some bobbin nose, a little bobbin nose mixed in. It's really just, I've been having it every day that I come home from work lately, and I like the rest of the menu. I want you to think about pricing out this. A wrap with falafel, hummus, I know it's a little redundant, and some beef shawarma because I know your food is good, but if I also like it, I will be in there very regularly ordering something like that. Because it, I know your food is good, but if I also like it, I will be in there very regularly ordering something like that. So just price it out, so that when I order it, they'll know what to, what to charge me. So welcome to East Arlington. I live very close by. You actually see my roof from your place. So thank you. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Tony, there's a long tradition held by a former select board member from a name Kevin Greeley, who says, "Welcome to Arlington. Thank you for choosing our town. Did you bring any samples?" And I am reminded of that, as I was reminded earlier from our water sewer rate, that we all managed to make it through that discussion while saying debt shift correctly, which is another Greeleyism of significant difficulty. But all joking aside, Tony, thank you for choosing Arlington. Welcome. Very glad to have you.
Mrs. Mahan.
I'll say dinner to my colleagues' remarks, and as far as the jalapeno hummus, my grandsons are half Nepalese, and I'm amazed that they're two of them at ages three plus, and they're all about the jalapeno and the hummus. So I look forward to your menu, and as Mr. Dunn said and my other colleagues, you know, thank you for choosing Arlington. We wish you nothing but success. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Well, I've never tried jalapeno hummus, but it sounds good, and I'll always try anything once. So I look forward to coming in there and checking out your, your new location once you're finished. And with that, we have a motion to approve by Mr. DeCoursey, seconded by Mr. Diggins.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
unanimous vote.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Humor.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Yep. And that brings us to item number six on the agenda, traffic rules in order in other business for discussion approval, metro fire mutual aid agreements. Mr. Chaplin.
Mr. Chair, I'm actually gonna ask Attorney Heim to give a brief description, and then I'll assist in answering any questions to the board.
Attorney Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you have before you is a renewal of our longstanding mutually fire departments. The nature of the agreement is relatively self-explanatory. Under Chapter 48, Section 59A, a select board is supposed to approve the mutual aid agreement. It's a little bit fuzzy under our Town Manager Act. The Town Manager tends to sign and execute most of our mutual aid agreements because he's authorized to do, enter into contracts and agreements on behalf of the town. So this is a little bit of an opportunity to, A, discuss one of the board and manager's shared goals of ensuring cooperation and mutual aid with other communities, but it's also an important approval to just sort of make sure that we've dotted I's and crossed P's and given the manager the authority that we want to make sure he has for such an important contract. Are there any questions substantively? This agreement has more or less been hammered out between all the chiefs in the, in the agreement. So it's kind of hard to make substantive changes. We can bring it back, but hopefully the board is satisfied with what's been constructed and will approve it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
Move approval. No comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan.
I'll second Mr. Dunn's approval, and just two quick questions, I hope. Under this mutual aid agreement, does this now bring up our conglomeration of participating cities and towns to approximately 35? Or am I reading that wrong?
Attorney Heim.
I have to apologize. I did not do a count on it.
It's 35.
Yeah, I believe that is the right number.
It is 35. Okay, and then just last two questions. Just we're bringing this on, and I'm anticipating, in terms of liability, when any city or town is participating in mutual aid, if an Arlington it town employee is suffers any kind of injury or anything that would result in a liability in another city or town or vice versa, somebody is responding to an Arlington response and suffers some sort of injury, whether personal or vehicular or something else, how does that work out? Just really short-term answer.
So, thank you. That's an excellent question, Mrs. Mahan. Under Section 3, Part B, it outlines that essentially the municipality rendering aid is responsible for operation of its equipment and basically remains subject to limits of liability. We all sort of essentially absorb liability for our folks in rendering aid because we all benefit from the sort of equal provision of these services. So our firefighters are taken care of. That's the most important thing, they're taken care of by Arlington. But the same thing is true if somebody comes to the aid of Arlington and somebody else's firefighters are hurt, they're taken care of by their respective municipality.
Okay, and my last quick question would be, in light of Arlington's small, short-lived, successful COVID-19 vaccine program down at Arlington High School through the Board of Health and others, including the Town Manager's Secretary, is there any relief through this now 35 city and town mutual aid agreement that I know the governor stopped Arlington individually as being able to give out the COVID vaccine that somehow we could join with the other 34 communities to become a collaboration that can do 750 vaccines a day? Or is that just unreaching?
That's another really good question. I actually think that our mutual aid agreement with respect to health services and a agreement that we run for basically our, I believe, is it MEMA, Mr. Chaplain?
Yes, it is.
Might be better, better equipped to service for some of those leverage points. It's a great question. I don't think our fire departments would do it, but it is possible that we have some resources through our mutual aid partners in health and emergency management that might have better occasion or jurisdiction, if you will, for that kind of purpose. Does that make sense, Mr. Chaplain? Would you concur with that?
It does make sense, but I would add even further that we are part of a group that's a smaller subset of, I think, communities that are entirely included on that list. Also working with the Cambridge Health Alliance and Tufts University to submit requests for approval from the state for a regional vaccination clinic. They haven't said no yet, but they haven't said yes yet either. My suspicion is they're not going to start approving any more regional startups until vaccine supply increases, which could be, you know, in the next two to three weeks. So I, I'm still hopeful that they will once again let us start to do vaccination locally, but it's still a waiting game right now.
I guess my final comment question would be to the Town Manager. I know Rich McKinnon, who's a president of the firefighters, professional firefighters here in Massachusetts, he and his union met with the Health and Human Services Secretary, Mary Lou Sutters, today to talk about having firefighters in different cities and towns. And some of the larger ones are contained in this 35 now, if this is approved city and town consortium. If we could follow up on that, because Rich McKinnon, who I know, and others do as well, in the PFFM and the fire union definitely have the expertise as well as fire stations in our cities and towns that can do that. So I'd like, if it's appropriate, to have our Town Manager, who's probably already on top of this, follow up on those conversations today that were had with Secretary Sutters. The way I was getting communications from Rich McKinnon, it seemed like this was a possibility versus, you know, pie in the sky. And again, with this mutual aid fire department agreements, that would be something, again, it's just centered around teachers. I'd like to expand it if it's something that can happen, but it's something that was discussed today. And I kind of feel like, you know, the first few cities and towns that receive the information and get there on the ground floor will be more well-footed or suited to take advantage of this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, I support Mr. Dunn's motion, and I do note of the 35 communities, each one of our direct neighboring communities is part of the mutual aid agreement. So I think that's important. And thank you for bringing this forward to us.
Thank you. Ms. Diggins?
Here, Mr. Chair. You know, so I'm reading it, it mentioned that there was an operational plan appended to the agreement. Did I miss that? I mean, I don't think it was attached, and that's okay if it wasn't. I'm just kind of curious, do you think there's anything worth, that would be interesting to members of the board in reading that? I guess I didn't direct that to anyone. I guess I should direct that to Mr. Heim.
Attorney Heim.
I'm sorry, Adam, if you wanted to speak on it, that's fine.
I was going to say, I could ask Chief Kelly for that operational plan to share with the board. My understanding is that it details the tactical and operational planning that fire departments do to be able to put their manpower together to respond to mutual aid requests. But I, and I don't have immediate access to it, but I could certainly provide it.
I'd be getting, I mean, my suspicion is that it probably wouldn't be of interest to the board. You know, it's just if I had missed it, then I was going to ask to be pointed to it, but if it wasn't included, it's probably for good reason. And I'm fine with that. And so the last agreement was in place for how long?
I believe that the last agreement was executed in November of 2001.
Okay, so roughly 20 years. Do you have a sense of how many times we contributed versus how many times we were helped?
I don't have those statistics, though. I know it is very regularly on both sides of that coin. And most regularly, mutual aid manifests in providing backup to a community while that community's frontline apparatus is responding. So, I mean, if the chief were here, I would think he would say it may be, it isn't, is on a weekly basis where, you know, Somerville Engines roll, and we provide some backup there. The next night, Arlington Engines roll, and a Somerville Engine provides backup Lexington, you know, so forth. So actually fighting large fires in mutual aid, I think, is much more rare because large fires are much more rare. But we certainly received mutual assistance, mutual aid with that large garage fire on Warren Street, the very large fire at Arizona Terrace a number of years ago. And I know we've also provided, we've also provided mutual aid for large fires in neighboring communities. So it is, again, it's more rare by virtue of the fact that fires are more rare. But, but I think it, you see the benefit of this mutual aid agreement on a very regular basis with that backup being provided.
So it is necessary, and that's good. So I'm all for these regional approaches to things, as you know. So I'm happy to support it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and my only comment that kind of goes along the lines with what Ms. Diggins was saying is that, I don't know if that's true, but I did speak with a firefighter one time about staffing, and he had mentioned to me that anytime there's a fire in Arlington, every person, every firefighter that's on duty, no matter what station they're at at the time, has a role, some sort of role to play in that fire. And that's where we see the benefit of these agreements, whereas with one fire, we need somebody to be on on call for a second fire or a third fire. And, you know, it's good to see that we have this in place with our neighboring communities to make sure that that, that we are protected in those instances. So happy to support it. With that, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mrs. Mahan. Attorney Heim?
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
unanimous vote.
All right, thank you. Takes us to our warrant article hearings, articles for review. First article that we have is Article 8, Bylaw Amendment, K9, Control Fees in Fines. This is inserted the request of the town clerk. Ms. Chaplin, do you know who's speaking on this?
Ms. Brazil is here. I just promoted her.
Ms. Brazil?
Hi, yes, I'm here. Good evening. So I know that this was presented last March. I was in the room, March 9, the last hearing in person. And at the time, the clerk's office was recommending a, just a simple reduction in the fines. I agree with that. I think we should cut the fine in half. We have a, we have a harder time collecting a $50 fine for making a mistake, missing a deadline. And it will be very much easier to enforce the rules if we can collect a $25 fine. People argue about that a lot less. So the, in addition, though, in order to make this easier to understand and to enforce, I've proposed some simple changes, just to clean up the language, clarify the language in the bylaw. I've summarized it in a memo, but the critical talking points are that I want to reassure that it's clear in writing and a way that people can read it, that all dogs have to be registered. The deadline to register is January. Dogs, new dogs that move into town should register within 30 days of moving to town. Puppies register when they're six months old. And I've worded the bylaw in such a way that I hope it's fairly clear that that those dates establish deadlines, and for each deadline, there's a 45-day grace period that runs, and then that grace period runs out on the next Thursday at the end of the 45 days. And we picked a Thursday, so because we're open until 7:00 PM in the clerk's office, and we want to be sure we make it as easy as possible for people to make that very, very last deadline. So, you know, if you have more questions, I'm happy to answer them. I don't want to read an entire bylaw in this hearing.
Ms. Brazil, do you want to also present on Article 24 while we have you up here, so we can get you in and out?
Sure.
Yep.
Do you want me to do that now, or do you want to ask questions about eight first?
See, you can present on Article 24 as well, that then the board can roll through any questions that they have on either.
Okay, so Article 24, I've already talked to the Finance Committee, and I'm pretty sure that they voted 14 to 2 to support it. The concept is, I think we should, as a community, go ahead and study when and how, if we want to convert the clerk's office from an elected to appointed position. When I was a town meeting member, as a town meeting member, I'm still a town meeting member, I supported converting the treasurer's position. I found it very helpful. There was a thoughtful process. We didn't rush into it in any way. There was the DOR report, which gave us a sort of a roadmap. Pretty sure we created a couple of study groups internally that presented back, and I think we should follow a similar process and look at converting the clerk's office. I talked to the town manager, and he thinks we could probably hire a consultant if we decide to do that for no more than $10,000. So, you know, that's basically it. I think, you know, I certainly wanted to catch the select board up because although, you know, the Finance Committee gets to weigh in on the appropriations, there's a lot going on. Anytime we set up attempt to study, you know, something like this. The Finance Committee asked a couple of questions whether we couldn't save the money and go ahead and set up an internal study group, and I'm certainly open to that. I think it's important. And a lot of towns hire outside consultants to bring in that fresh perspective. They even bring in outside people to, for the hiring committees. I mean, this is a, this is an important thing that you're considering. And I want to be sure that we're doing it thoughtfully, and I, so my recommendation is that we bring somebody in. And I, so my recommendation is that we bring somebody in, but I'm happy, obviously, always to discuss it with you guys.
Yeah, great. And I will go to the board for any questions, comments, or motions on Article eight in twenty-four. Mr. Dunn?
I am very happy to support both. I think that the, the changes in the language in eight are really straightforward. I think that twenty-four is a good, I, I'm predisposed to think that we should move to an appointed clerk. But I also know that it's something that's not taken lightly, and I think that taking a closer look at it first makes sense. But I think that the treasurer's office really benefited from having a, the treasurer's office really benefited from, from being closer integrated to the rest of the town. I think the employees, when the, within the office, stopped being so siloed and got to interact with other departments a lot better and became a lot, opened up a lot of cross, like interdepartmental, across-the-mental, departmental career advancement that I think is really powerful for the town. And I think that we also benefit from, with the offices like that, I don't, I actually, I just don't think that the elections were serving it, or always serving us that well. Whereas sometimes we would get a really great treasurer, and sometimes we weren't getting a great treasurer. And I certainly think that Julie's a great treasurer, but she's not going to be here for, excuse me, Julie's a great town clerk, but she's not going to be here forever. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. De Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll second Mr. Dunn's motion. I do have a few questions that may lead to a friendly amendment. But just on, on the annual renewal, Ms. Brazil, has January traditionally been the month for the renewals? Like, I know you're going to, we want to put this in the bylaw now, but I'm just wondering if, if that had been consistent over the years.
I think it has. It's because it's easier to print a dog tag with the year on it and have that be, you know, you can change the color, and obviously, the, the year printed on the tag itself changes so that it's visually obvious. It's just easier to do it on a calendar year for the renewals.
Okay, and I'm just going to suggest a change on paragraph two. I know you say they must be renewed every January. I wonder if we can put, they must be renewed on or before January thirty-first of each, of each year, just so that we, we have a deadline. And it also leads to my next question on what the intention was on the grace period. Was it forty-five days after January thirty-first or forty-five days after January one, when the obligation first arose?
Pretty sure if you do the math, in March, forty-five days from, so the deadline this year is March eleventh.
Okay, all right. So, so it's after the deadline rather than, I, I just, on bylaws, just to make, I almost prefer to put dates rather than, than, than the days. And I know the grace period applies both to the annual renewal and dogs moving into town. So I, I get that. So I'm just wondering, and maybe Attorney Heim, again, this is more of a friendly amendment rather than maybe forty-five days after each deadline, the grace period ends.
Sorry about that. So the friendly amendment would be so that it reads failure to satisfy requirements before the third, first Thursday following forty-five business days of the date of relicensing. Is that the provision that you're talking about, Mr. De Corsi?
I'm sorry, just inserting language that it's the deadline, forty-five business days after the, the respective deadline, as opposed to the date the obligation arises. I, I'm sorry to get people bogged down in this, but I mean, I just feel like that, that way it's, you're looking at January thirty-one as a deadline. You're going forty-five days after that. And then during the year, you're going to have different deadlines depending on when families with dogs move into town.
Sure, I, I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So, Mr. De Corsi, I think I can wordsmith something, but along the lines of, you know, relevant deadline set forth, you know, in sections, you know, yeah, set forth, set forth during, or I'll figure out which sections it should explicitly reference.
Okay, thank you. And, and just one last thing, and on the waiver of fees, and this, this seems to be a, a change. And I don't know if this is an enforcement type thing, but for the service animal and for an owner age seventy or over, we're waiving the regular fees. I, I'm a little uncomfortable with charging them a late fee if they come in. I mean, obviously, you want them to come in, but I, I, I'd be more comfortable with there being no fee, and they come in here unless I, unless there's a strong reason for, for charging a late fee for, for, for a license that we're not charging anything for.
Okay, it's harder to enforce if you don't charge the twenty-five-dollar fine from, for being really, really late. I mean, we've, we've waived the fee forever, and that's not, that's not, I, I support that. So I would be in favor, but obviously, I'm keeping the fine for people who can't do the paperwork on time.
I think, Mrs. De Corsi, with the reasons for the fine is in the clerk and clerk's run is to incentivize people because they want their dogs to be licensed, correct? So without the fine, they just wouldn't license the dogs.
Yeah, I, I, I get that for the people who are paying the annual fee, but for the people that, an elderly person or a person who has a service dog, we're not charging the fee. And I understand, you know, maybe no one comes in at that point, but it's, I, I just, it, it sounds like the rest of the board doesn't really want to do anything. And I'm a little uncomfortable with that, but that's, I'll just leave that out there.
I mean, the bylaw as it stands now, we charge them the full fifty-dollar fine. So, yeah.
Yeah, although I thought late fees apply is new language for both the service animal and owner age seventy and over category.
I wanted it to be clear. Okay. We do, we do charge it.
Okay.
But I wanted it to be clear.
All right. And, and just briefly, Mr. Chairman, on Article twenty-four, I support that. And I, and I understand the primary motion will be the Finance Committee's motion on this because it will require an appropriation. Just a question on who will the consultant report to with the, the final work product, or who will be presented to?
So that's one of the reasons for talking to you tonight. I think we do, you know, as a collective team, we will need to, to think about that. I think, I think each town sets it up the way that's comfortable and makes sense for them. So I'm, I'm open to suggestions about how we, how we structure that.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Heim, did you have something to add there?
Yeah, I, I, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what, what I would recommend as a default, unless the board is uncomfortable with it, is that, you know, as the chief executive body, regardless of whether or not the board opts to take a position, it would seem like the most natural fit for the board to receive the report, much in the way that the board was, was one of the places where the treasurer office conversion was discussed. It wasn't necessarily true that all members of the board supported conversion, but it seems like the best place since the treasurer, I mean, oh my gosh, the clerk doesn't have regular public meetings of some kind. The Election Modernization Committee would be the other possibility. Of course, since this is, you know, an established body that looks at some of the issues that influence the town clerk. But, but ultimately, I think the select board would have to be, would have to report on the conversion issue at some point or another, even if it's, you know, only in the town meeting season under a warrant article, I think it would still have to come before the board eventually.
Yep. All right, Mrs. Mahan.
I was just saying, what's the odds that I get called on next? Easy, easy thing for our sodical eight. I'm definitely in support of, have no questions. Thank you to my colleagues for sort of mulling that out. Article twenty-four. I'm not in favor of, and, and the reason I say that, especially with the town clerk, and having gone through the town treasurer experience for years, I oppose that. The only reason I acquiesced to it was that A, Dean Carmen was coming in, and B, there were representations from town administration, school administration, and my colleagues on the school side that with this, taking this position away from the voters to be appointed by the town manager, that there would be a agreement between town and school that the treasurer, along with the deputy town manager, vis a vis town manager, would work with the school side to ensure that there was duplicity in terms of general accounting ledger of how the, the town budget and school budget operates in terms of transparency and reporting and basic general ledger one-on-one, and that did not happen. It fell to the politics again. My opinion, schools were given a pass. Don't get me started on special ed. Don't get me started on long-range planning meetings that we've had, which Mr. De Corsi chairs. And there have been some very open and transparent conversations from the town side. And on the school side, it's just been, in my personal opinion, not speaking for Mr. De Corsi, anyone else on that committee, school side is just totally, again, a wall. And unfortunately, politics played into that and it played out. So I wish I hadn't dropped my stance on treasure because the promises that were made did not come true. And so my concern on the town clerk, which I will not be voting for, so if we can take two separate votes, if that's okay with Mr. Dunn and Mrs. De Corsi, would not be in favor of that. We are a town. If we want to move to a city and give everything to the city manager to a point, then someone should embark on a charter commission, but especially around the town clerk. I, I know one, one of my colleagues said, you know, thank goodness we have Ms. Brazil, but we might not have her in the future. But unless someone can point to a previous town clerk, that was a disaster throughout her whole tenancy, not accounting for maybe a few months, that, that process has worked. And I don't think politics should get involved with the town clerk's office because I've seen nothing good come of it. I'm so disappointed, not by Mrs. Martin, Mrs. Martin. She's a great treasurer, but the reason we went down that path, which is kind of what I'm hearing here, we want to do the right thing and make sure it's fair. I, I don't think it's the right way to go. So I will vote yes on eight and no on Article twenty-four. And I think it's a waste of money. Unless the town clerk's office wants to take a study amongst itself that doesn't cost any money, but it doesn't sound like that. So that's my position.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with respect to eight, we understand where Mrs. De Corsi's coming from about putting a fine, I mean, when there's no charge. But I definitely agree with Mrs. Brazil, I mean, that you do need to have an incentive made out for people to, to do the registration. So, so they get to break, I mean, by not having to pay for it. But if they don't do it, I mean, there really needs to be some incentive. So I'm in favor of keeping the fine on that one. With respect to twenty-four, you know, I understand the, how treasurer is kind of different than clerk because clerk runs the elections, I mean, so we do have to be careful about that. When I think about where we are more likely to end up with a ineffective, or let's rephrase that, a bad clerk, I have my opinions on that, but this isn't the time for it because I am all in favor of studying the issue, you know, because we, when, when it's studied, it may come back to us that because we are a town, it may not be a good idea, I mean, to, to appoint one. We may get arguments for it. So, so I'm all for the study. Me, with respect to who does it, I think it's probably better to have an outside party do it, once again, because it is an elected position and we do want to have, I mean, at least the semblance of neutrality. Normally, I'm all for having it done internally because I like to have those skill sets or build those skill sets inside. But this would be one case for going outside. So, so like I said, I have my, my, my thoughts about whether it should. But like I said, this isn't the place for it. So you'll see how I'm going to vote, whatever.
Thank you. And I think everything in Article eight makes sense. It made sense before, and it still does. And Article twenty-four, you know, so much like Mr. Diggs said, you know, I don't think there's any harm in studying, take a position at this time as, as to whether or not it should be appointed versus elected. But I think if we can present, you know, options as to what the conversion would look like and how it would be structured, I think it helps make the decision. And it might, like you said, make it look like, maybe we don't want that structure. Maybe we do, but I think at least knowing what we're in for is a good thing. So this is a public hearing. So if any members of the public would like to speak on either Article eight or Article twenty-four, please use the raise hand function in your Zoom application now. And with that, we will close public comments. And Attorney Heim, we have a motion to approve Article eight.
Just so I can clarify, this Article eight is with the friendly amendment with respect to the articulation of deadlines. Is that correct?
Correct. Mr. De Corsi, or Mr. Dunn?
Yes, happy to.
Okay, Mrs. Mahan.
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Diggs.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. Our motion to approve Article twenty-four, Attorney Heim.
Mrs. Mahan.
In light of the twenty-two-three eighteen million dollar possible override, and we need to trim, I say no.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Diggs.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
In the light of the fact that this is about the town clerk's office and not the schools, I vote yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Okay, it is a four-to-one vote.
All right, thank you, Ms. Brazil.
Thank you.
Article nine, Bylaw Amendment Display of Notice Fines. Ms. Chaplin?
Ms. Chaplin, do you want me to?
Yeah, please, please, Mr. Dunn.
Attorney Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is very, very quick. This is basically a cleanup to a previous revision to the bylaws where we updated the, the last time we updated the signed bylaws. Because we removed its association with the outdoor advertising general law provisions, we could not assess as high of a penalty. And the Attorney General's Office essentially says the penalty has to be three hundred dollars instead of five hundred dollars. So that's the question.
Yep. All right, Ms. Diggs?
Oh, that's an easy one for me. I'll move positive action. I have nothing to add, so thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Second.
Mr. Dunn?
No comment. Thank you.
Mrs. Mahan?
Since it has nothing to do with the schools, no comment. Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If any members of the public would like to speak, please use the raise hand function on your Zoom application. Not anticipating any public comments on this one. We'll close public comments. Attorney Heim, motion for positive action.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Diggs.
That's okay. That's quite all right. Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
It's unanimous vote. Thank you.
All right, that takes us to Article ten, Bylaw Amendment Street Performance Definition. Ms. Chaplin.
Mr. Hurt, if you, I'm happy to handle it. This has been requested to be polled, to my understanding, so there's a motion for no action if the board, unless the board would like to take up the issue again.
This is a course.
Yeah, move no action.
Ms. Diggs?
I'll second that.
Mr. Dunn?
No comment.
Mrs. Mahan?
No comment. Thank you. No comment, thank you.
And this is a public hearing, if any members of the public would like to speak on this, use the raise hand function, use Zoom application now. A wonderful way to conduct warrant article hearings. Attorney Hahn, we have a motion for. No action.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
All right, that takes us to article seventeen, vote establishment of a. Youth and young adult advisory board commission or committee studying community. Ms. Diggins, you want to take this one?
Yes, thank you. We so. As you all may know, I ran on the notion of creating something like this. And I I think, given the hard time that we gave, people came to the board with the resolutions that we felt, well, you know. Me, why do we need to do this? Me, why can't we, why do we need to have this resolution when we can't, we have the means to do this? And yes, the select board could create one, I could ask you all to. Create one, and if everyone or most of us agree to it, we would be, but I don't. I feel it would be better if something like this were not a. If it didn't continue because of the makeup of the board. And I want it to have a life of its own, I also want town meeting to own it. Because I think the 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 youth and young adult are part of the entire community, and I think the creation of something like this should. Be done by the entire community. And the reason for studying it as opposed to wanting to create it right away. Was I did some work for the Rainbow Commission, and that led me to check out all three hundred fifty one. Websites to me, you know, the municipalities and in towns, and I did see some interesting takes being on. This concept, meaning, so I I would like to see us explore that. More intensely, and and also I tend to be the deliberative type, be so I, and and the collaborative type. Me, so I would like to have a a bunch of people in. The room, the virtual room discussing this, and the better, the best part about that, too, is that it would be open to the public, so. Regardless of the makeup of the study committee, it would be open for lots more input. From the community, so so that's my rationale for asking for the study committee, so. Any questions, comments? I turn it back over to the chair.
Can move approval and wait for other board members?
I don't, is it right for me to move approval of my own? Again, okay, it was this, yes, I I I will approve a lot of it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
I'm happy to second it. I read it and I gave it, and I. I I think it's an interesting study. My one thought, and I'm curious what other board members think, is that. We should, we should, I think we should find a way to make sure that we're getting some diversity, equity, inclusion. Voice on this group, and so I'm not exactly sure what the best way to do that is. One option might be to actually even to move the seat from the LBGDQ. To something more broad, or maybe to add another seat. And I don't know if it makes sense to maybe add someone from the Black Students Union, or like a designated from the high school. Or if there is maybe another. Oh, shoot, I forget, someone from the, I I forget, I know the 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 title of the woman. Changed the diversity, it was diversity coordinator, but I think it, her title changed, and I don't remember.
DEI Director.
DEI Director, thank you. I apologize for not recalling the appropriate title. But anyway, I I think that I think that the committee could be improved through that, through an addition of that type. But but in general, I'm very supportive.
Yeah, Mr. Carson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also support the motion by Mr. Diggins and. Perhaps for the final vote, that there can be something worked on to to address Mr. Dunn's suggestions, which I think are very good.
Mrs. Mahan.
Ditto Mr. De Corsi's comments.
All right. I'll support as well, you know, I think it's an innovative idea. Excited to see what we can come up with. All right, this is a public hearing. If any members of the public would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand function, your Zoom application now. All right, that closes public hearing. Attorney Hahn, we have a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Can I propose, I was, I was wondering if we're gonna get any voices from the crowd that gave, that saw a path. I I'd like to propose a friendly amendment to Mr. Diggins' motion. That includes the 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 draft that we see next, like for for final approval, includes some form of a DEI representative. And I leave that to Mr. Diggins in the in the chair and the town council to fit into the draft.
Right, Mr. Diggins.
Yeah, I, yeah, I I fully support that, and I certainly have some ideas about how to do that, yeah, and. And also want to emphasize me that that of the, the the study committee itself, me, does not have the diversity, me, that the. The committee, it's. Commission or board, whatever results will have, the whole purpose will be to study how to get that, you know, and so, 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 yeah. Very happy to support that amendment.
Can I ask for a clarification of one thing, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So are we, is the amendment to create a new, an additional member? Specifically?
My, I I didn't want to bind you in that tightly, Doug, if you find a way to figure it out without adding a member, do it, and if you want to add a member and solves it, do it, that would be.
Got it.
All right, Attorney Hahn.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Diggins.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. Is this to article nineteen, vote establishment of a town committee on residential development? We have Mr. Parisi with us? Mr. Priest, can you hear us?
Yes, I gotta turn everything on. Okay, there we go.
Say your name.
Can you see me and him?
Yep.
Yep, thank you very much. Hello, everyone. I. This statement in this warrant article was presented last year, and it's a carryover because of the delay. So thereby, there's a statement that I made last year that's in the reference material. It's not too long and explains the basis and summary of this Warren article pretty well. So as such, I'm going to just try to be very brief and hit the highlights here, and if you have any questions and so forth, I'd be happy to try to answer them. I'm certainly a longtime resident of Arlington, and so I've been watching the residential development that goes on here. Over the last five or 10 years, and I'm trying to address some of the concerns that residents have. That perhaps have not been addressed yet and don't seem to be coming up on anyone's agenda. Some of these issues were raised as far back as twenty sixteen at town meetings and at various board. Meetings, including the ARB meetings. And it would be good if we were able to look at this from the viewpoint of existing residents. And the impacts of development on their neighborhoods and their quality of life. Well, we have largely had very positive developments throughout towns in all the zoning districts. From time to time, because of such increased activity. Some things are not coming out probably as well as existing residents. May wish, and they may have some negative impacts on these people. So, last year I had drafted this, and. The idea is to get a resident majority committee. Of residents that are not affiliated with the town or its governance and not affiliated with the. Building and development and real estate industries. So that we could periodically meet, raise concerns, identify issues of concern, and bring them up to the appropriate boards in town. Essentially, a way to elevate some of these issues. Now, one of the things that had gone forward as a result of town meeting was a good neighbor agreement. But its implementation is still kind of spotty, from what I understand, and remains an issue. Quality of life issues certainly remain when developments are inappropriate in neighborhoods such as loss of sunlight, loss of. Sightlines, loss of privacy, and all these kinds of things are actually exasperated much more on. Areas and that are budding, non-conforming lots, where a non-conforming butter exists. These negative or potential negative effects are greatly exaggerated. And I've heard no discussion about non-conforming lots and how they fit into all the development plans in the town. Especially when we have significant issues going on. Some of the other issues that were mentioned were certainly environmental, public health impacts that need to always be elevated. For instance, rock removal, excavation noise and debris that's generated on construction sites. So, very briefly, no one. Group seems to represent just the residents in town, and these issues, some way, some ways always getting submerged are. Less, less. Visibility than they should. So. That's a very brief. Overview of the issues and. We're back again because COVID didn't allow us to fully address this last year at town meeting. And hopefully it can get addressed here, so. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and. That's about it.
Thank you. And Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know that I have a question. Or if it is a question, but I'm I'm still unsure with this committee, it's no less than five, no more than nine. The membership. Speaks to a quorum that's appointed. So I don't know if that means five are appointed by the town moderator, not sure where the other four come from, and. I do know. That, you know, the redevelopment board and planning board are the boards that. If anything were to come from this committee would have the authority to present to town meeting. And I'm I'm trying to be mindful of that some other board or commission isn't setting up a. You know. We don't feel we have enough time with the select board or unheard enough or. Something else, so we're going to set up a study group that we're not doing the same thing to our colleagues on the redevelopment. And planning board, so I guess my question, two questions to Mr. Paris, and then from that maybe. A comment or question after that. Is it five or nine members? Five are appointed, where do we get the other four, and it seems as though. With all due respect, that. The option of residents organized or not going before the planning. Department or redevelopment board just don't want to do this anymore and want to set up a committee.
As far as the five to nine, I had written it with my minimal understanding of town procedures and so forth, that the town moderator could. Appoint all of the. Members. The difference was we were specifying that at least five would be residents. With no affiliations, as I briefly discussed before, so that we would be getting resident opinions strictly based on. Their experiences as town residents and living in the neighborhoods and experiencing what's going on. The other four certainly could have some affiliations with the town and so forth. But it'd be a resident oriented committee. If there's a better way to structure it, I'm certainly open to that. If there's a better way to get residents together, to get these opinions in a more formal manner, and then be able to follow them to the town, I'm open to that. The object of this is to try to take into account the variety of things that are going on in neighborhoods. That may not always be visible, but many residents are concerned about.
Okay.
Did I, did I miss your second question?
Uh, no, no, it was, I think I already know about the. Perhaps your feelings of using the route of the planning deport, planning board and redevelopment. Authority meetings, which is where I think this should be properly addressed, as well as we have a. An exemplary tree warden regarding the tree canopy issues, so. I guess I'll wait to hear from my colleagues, this is something I'm just not inclined to support, because it's just. Not defined well enough for me as well as. I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Carson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Parisi, for bringing this forward. I I do share Mrs. Mahan's. Concerns in terms of, I I agree this, these issues, I think, are more properly before the redevelopment board and and. I think it's important to raise the issues, but I'm hesitant to support the creation of a a committee at this point.
Ms. Diggins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, my inclination would be that you maybe need to work on figuring out what the committee will do. How we structured, and especially how you can get a a wide array of of residents. Me, so that you don't end up with a very small group of people who think the same way. Be so, so I could. Look, it, I, part of the reason I went the route was with my request being for setting up a a study committee. Me, for using young adults was to figure out how to do this, you know. And I think you could maybe stand to have me some time to figure out how to do it, and and. And if you aren't willing to change it to a committee to study how to do this. Be that maybe spend, be some more time working with. People who care about these issues, too, me, I, I care, I'm a little concerned about the bandwidth that I have. But it, I I would certainly, you know. I mean, I'm interested in trying to figure out how to approach this, even if we don't. Decide to do positive action on this, or we don't amend it to a study committee, you know, so. That's where I'm I'm leaning towards maybe doing a study committee on how to do it, but I'll, I'll wait to before I'm chiming in on how I'm gonna vote. Thank you.
Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Parisi, for bringing it forward. I do appreciate the discussion. Because I think one of the points that you make that comes through loud and clear is that there are. There's definitely several, many people in the town who aren't satisfied with the progress on our revisions to our zoning bylaws. And the, but I, and I actually think of that, but I I think one of the things that I I guess I I hear is that, not specifically from you, but I I know from other conversations that. Some people think we are going, you know, there's a lot of disagreement on which direction we should be going, let alone how fast we should be going. And I, unfortunately, I, but I continue to believe that these discussions are best held within the committees that we already have. Meaning the the ARB, the zoning bylaw review and so on, and I don't think that creating an additional committee will. Provide us any additional clarity or help us move forward with any additional velocity, so. I I'm, well, I greatly appreciate the conversation. I greatly appreciate you bringing it forward. I'm going to respectfully move a recommendation of no action.
All right, and again, thank you, Mr. Parisi, for the presentation. I don't want to reiterate what all my colleagues have said, other than, you know, this is a discussion that I think starts. In and around the redevelopment board, since they are the board that has the authority over the zoning changes. So I think, you know, this is certainly a, an issue that we hear often and people are concerned about, but. I think there's other avenues within the, I think residents have other avenues to voice their concerns and try to push for changes in these areas. As currently structured. So we do have a motion for no action. Do we have a second before we turn to public comment?
Second.
Of course, this is a public hearing. If any members of the public wish to speak to this article, you have one raised hand. Chaplain, promote Winell Evans. All right. Ms. Evans, if you can just say your name for the record.
There we go. Can you hear me now? Winell Evans Orchard Place.
Yes, we can.
I, I would like to speak in support of this article. I, I hear and understand the concerns that people have about how this would be structured and what the specific purposes might be, but I do believe there's a need for it. To my understanding, there is not currently a committee or a board that would address the kind of issues that Mr. Paris is talking about. To my understanding, the ZBA is really more of a reactive board. They deal with issues having to do with specific properties that come before them, but they are not proactively designing bylaws or, or other kinds of actions that would deal with some of these issues. And the ARB is dealing with somewhat larger scale projects. And I think what Mr. Paris is talking about are individual instances in neighborhoods. Very briefly, I was a member of the residential study group. And when it was disbanded, we had several items on our docket that we didn't get to and that really have not had the kind of follow-up that they deserve. The issue of rock removal is going to only become more and more of an issue because basically the, you know, the level easy lots are gone. And, and when redevelopment takes place now, the likelihood that it will be on lots that require significant rock removal is, is only growing. We had planned to do a follow-up of enforcement on the good neighbor agreement to see how residents' ideas and reactions to development had changed after it had been in place for a while and we did not have an opportunity to do that. We were definitely going to talk about the potential impacts of accessory dwelling units on butters. That will probably be handled through the redevelopment board. But I think the perennial issue that comes up is that of teardowns. And this began in, in my memory with Lynn Carden's 2016 moratorium. There is now another moratorium article proposed. And there, there's obviously something that is not being addressed in terms of how people feel about what's going on in their neighborhoods. They see these smaller, older homes demolished and replaced with much larger and much more expensive homes. So there, there are ripple effects from what's going on here. So I think a study group to, to talk about what's happening in neighborhoods, how it impacts butters and, and other neighbors. And to think about maybe how we can address what people see as, as these issues. There are an awful lot of incredibly smart people in Arlington. I am humbled every time I attend a committee or a board meeting. And I think a group of residents could get together and maybe do a much better job than I'm doing right now about really delineating the issue and thinking about ways to address it. Thank you for letting me speak.
All right. Here we have Ms. Henkin.
Hi, Hannah Henkin, precinct six. I wanted to speak against this. This seems like a formalization of a lot of like homeowners association, NIMBY kind of things that I worry would simply try to further push affordable housing out of Arlington. I feel like this is, if you have problems in your neighborhood, the important people to be talking to should be your town meeting member. Should be members of the redevelopment board. I just don't think that a handful of people who are who just want their area to look slightly nicer is really an important thing for the town to have. I think that this is something that de-democratizes getting information about what housing and residential needs are in the town. Yeah, that's really all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We had a hand, which has now gone down. So that will close the public comment portion of this article. All right. Without any additional comments, we have a motion for no action by Mr. Dunn, second by Mr. Corsi, attorney high.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freeze.
Thank you.
The next article that we have is Article 23, Vote Provision of Town Email Addresses for Town Meeting Members. We have Ms. Henkin up again.
Hi, nice to see you all again. So my warrant article 23 is meant to mandate that the town provide official town email addresses for each town meeting member as their primary form of contact. The intent is that this email address would provide town meeting members with addresses that are easy to reach, don't expose their personal email addresses to malicious actors and improve transparency overall in the town. It's a fairly simple ask, but it addresses a lot of kind of complex problems that occur in trying to communicate with town government in Arlington. Official town email addresses make it a lot easier for constituents to contact town meeting members and better communication makes for better town government. Having an official email address would provide a smooth, standardized and reliable method of contact. And a lot of town member meeting, town meeting member emails currently aren't listed or go to defunct inboxes. Having all of the incoming contact goes through an official town email provides accountability and transparency, which improves trust between the community and the town government. Emails that come into an official town email are discoverable by an FOIA request, and this is a positive thing. It represents a commitment to the integrity of our town governance. In fact, a town meeting member who couldn't be here tonight was so adamant about this point that he actually sent me a quote that he wanted me to read in support of it. Adam McNeil, the town meeting member from precinct four. He said that good constituent engagement and therefore completes fulfillment of the spirit of representative office requires active work and effort. This is especially true at the town meeting level where formal polling doesn't exist and issues usually have a very high impact on daily life to general populist excitement ratio. However, we're lucky to have constituents that occasionally initiate engagement and valuable feedback, thoughts and information, but we should work to make this so-called easy part of constituent engagement as low a hurdle as possible for the engager. Obviously, the town can't mandate that a town meeting member actively check their inboxes, just like they can't mandate that they vote at town meeting in the first place, but supplying the inboxes is an easy way to provide a tool for engagement and facilitate a culture of constituent engagement. Providing town emails rather than personal emails is much safer for town meeting members and adds an additional barrier to both harassment and spam. Protecting the privacy of town members is important. You shouldn't have to expose yourself to online harassment or privacy breaches to serve in town government. The town IT infrastructure is much more capable than individual town meeting members to protect against phishing scams, spam and other malicious actors. Having your personal email attached to identifying information like your street address and your name are, won't immediately allow identity theft, but the more pieces of personal identifying information you have together, especially because a lot of those personal emails are what people then use to log into a lot of their online accounts, increases their chance of having a privacy breach. And it also allows many of them to be contacted by online trolls and be the subject of harassment. And if your work in local government earns you the intention of these online harassers, it's a lot harder to close off your personal email, which is connected to a lot of other accounts to avoid them than it is for the town IP to move you to another official address, especially when we're moving on from the position and retiring. The article only mandates that these email addresses be the primary listed contact by the town in place of the current emails. The law doesn't allow us to mandate, and this article doesn't dictate, that town meeting members use this as for all town member related business, simply that the town provides it as the primary contact. It's easy to therefore answer incoming emails from what our inbox works best via mail forwarding. And that also allows for town meeting members who can't or do not want to use email at all to set up what is basically used for a lot of out of office emails where it just bounces back and it can send someone a phone number and hours to call if that's how they want to be contacted. This should all be in line with the town's acceptable use policy for their email. Having a provided separate inbox makes it easier to find town business related emails rather than searching one's own personal inbox, especially around the time of town meeting when you're getting a lot of notifications from the town, from other town meeting members and from your constituents. That just makes it a lot easier to know where your stuff is and make sure you're not missing important emails regarding the town. Adding users to an already existing email system is a fairly straightforward and not outrageously expensive endeavor. It's the kind of thing that the high school has to do every year when they get a new crop of freshmen. I talked to Sandy Poehler and the cost per user for the Microsoft governmental email license that the town uses is $90 per user per year, resulting in a total cost of about $22,000 a year for all 252 town meeting members. However, several town meeting members actually have and have listed their town emails as their main contact information, which would not add to the cost or workload of onboarding. It's not a super outrageous cost to the town. There is no listed specific line item in the publicly available town financials for the sum total of the town's email hosting. But from looking at the expenses under the IT department, $22,000 represents less than 4% of the current half million expenses listed under the IT department and we give town meeting, which doesn't have any expenses currently listed, expenses on par with those listed for the select board, which is also around $22,000. It's a really worthwhile expense to increase the effectiveness of communication and improve privacy and securities for county members. Sending inquiries from these official emails will also make it easier for other town offices to recognize and prioritize town meeting members who often serve on committees, other volunteer positions or carrying messages from their constituents to those town offices. It just makes the operation.
You can just wrap it up.
Yeah, I just have another.
And you can have a couple of questions.
Town government isn't just a hobby. You and the town meeting members do important work that impacts the lives and livelihoods of the people who live in this town. The choices that are voted on in town meeting are a really great responsibility and it's important that we don't just support that on kind of a personal level, but legislatively and systematically. It's important that constituents can reach town meeting members in a reliable official capacity and that town meeting members have a reliable, safe way to be contacted. It also reduces work for the town clerk when compiling contact information, which is an extra bonus.
Thank you. And I will turn to the board for any questions, comments or motions. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Henkin, for the presentation that you definitely covered quite a bit in there. One of the things I'm curious, did your exploration take you into tech support? About what the, what, how like estimates about that and what the, what that would look like?
I tried to get an estimate from the IP department. They said that they don't entirely know what tech support would look like and there's no, unfortunately, there's no line item in the publicly available financials on the town website for tech support and how much it generally costs for other departments that exist. But adding users is probably the work of a week or two.
I get, so my thought, it's an interesting idea and I had, and I, I was, I was thinking it over a little bit and I guess one of my concerns is the, is that tech support aspect of it because, so like the goals you've got about the about increased participation, increased accessibility, I certainly am in favor of those. I'm, I definitely have some concerns that putting the email addresses up there, as you, as you definitely pointed out, is different from someone actually reading them and responding to them. And it's been my experience that, so that a lot of the town meeting members aren't always the most technologically savvy. They, you know, there's a, there's a very, there's a high variation in the technical skills of town meeting members. And I thought, and I thought about the high school example and like it existed, those, you know, that freshman class of high school, they are, they're digital natives and for them, a login and a password is, you know, they've had, they literally had them since they were born. Whereas a bunch of our, I can think of at least one town meeting member who I correspond with, whose email address, they're both town meeting members, but they share, it's a married couple that shares the same email address. And that, you know, like figuring through all the accommodations for things like that is a, it's a, it's like, it's a, there, there's definitely administrative overhead. So you, you talked about a savings for the town clerk, but there's, there's a lot more on the other side. Thank you for answering my question. I'm going to keep listening for a bit before I come to a final thought.
All right. And Mrs. Mahan?
I was hoping I'd be last on this. When we had the great town email debate for members of the select board, I voted in, I think I was the only person who voted no. But of course, when it went through, I agreed to have the town email. For four years, I got nothing. Wasn't able to access it because everything came through a spam. And then the fifth year that remedied, but then one of my concerns was that my town email, I would not be the person overseeing it and controlling it. It would be taken out of my hands and I was told I shouldn't worry about that. Well, what happened was through my town email, the town was contacted, and I know the town manager is aware of this, and the select board's office, that an email came in to stop my direct deposits of $111.63 a month as my payment for being a member of the select board and to stop the direct mail and to send it to a different. And the town notified me that they were aware of that and they weren't going to pay attention to that and, but guess what? They did. And then when I inquired with payroll, who, the change had been made from this scam email. But it went to my town email account. I, instead of just saying, well, ignore that and you, you all agree that and it was a scam email and I was informed of it from the town after I made inquiry. No, I had to go through all the machinations of going back to the bank, setting up a direct deposit. So I don't have great faith in the town email. So I would not recommend favorable action on this because that control was taken away from me. It's a small thing. It's $111.63 a month. Oh, no, not 111. Sorry. $11.63 a month. But I also worry about what other parts of my private life through my town email account could be compromised with identity, identity theft and the like. And the like. So I can't in good conscience move favorable action on this.
What, was anything done at the town IT level to remedy that from happening? Again, that sounds like a, a pretty big deal for town operations since everyone needs to have emails.
No, I just know that the change was made from a fraudulent email to my town account that I had no control over. So I didn't investigate it any further. I took about three weeks of steps to remedy that. So I would listen to my colleagues, but from my standpoint, it would be to move no action until we can kind of firm up those security measures before we open 252 people more to that experience.
All right. And Mr. Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll second Mrs. Mahan's motion for, for discussion and I want to thank Ms. Henkin for bringing this forward. I, as Mr. Dunn said, I think it's an interesting proposal. I'm going to look back on my experience as a town meeting member, which, which is over a long period of time. And I am one of the town meeting members that, that And I am one of the town meeting members that, that, uh, over the years, it's provided, um, an email address and, and, and the phone number and, and that I personally prefer that when I was a town meeting member, but I, I think this is one of those ones where I'd probably be inclined for purposes of our vote to support no action, but I would be curious to see what town meeting members think at, at, at town meeting if, if there is a substitute motion, but I, I, um, there is a contact list that gets published on the town's website, and I do understand that there are some town meeting members who will put confidential for both their phone number and their email address, and they may be uncomfortable giving it, but they, the vast majority of town meetings members provide one or the other or both. And, and, um, you know, just based on, on that experience that I've had, um, I'm inclined to support her motion, but I thank you for, for raising the issue.
Mr. Higgins.
Yeah. Um, so I, I wondered, I mean, uh, a while ago, whether it's possible to just set up some aliases, I mean, uh, so that you could get a standardized format for the email address. I mean, the mail would not be posted by the town. It would just be a pass through. And so I think that would be one possible remedy, if it's technically possible, being, I think the question is, be, yeah, I mean, it's, um, I haven't tried setting up something like that. I mean, I know that with technology, you can do pretty much whatever you want to do. It's just really a matter of whether you have access to do it that way. Um, uh, uh, and I'm just thinking of like solutions to the things that you brought up with respect to me separating your uh, personal email, uh, from your town meeting business. You can always set up an, an alternative account. Me, I mean, I know what you're going for is a standard, um, format and, and I appreciate that. Um, yeah, um. I don't have anything more to say at this point. Thank you.
And thank you again for the detailed presentation. I mean, this is actually an article that I don't have strong feelings either way because it's really one of these articles that town meeting should weigh in on, um, because it comes down to whether or not the expense is worth it as if our town meeting members think that they would rather have um, town email addresses versus just listing their, their own personal email addresses. I can say I personally, from experience, haven't had experiences like Mrs. Mahan, but you know, I still log in just like I did when I was in college. I log in with my email address and password to get my town emails. And generally, the turnaround time and response is a little more difficult than I know when people want, really need to get in touch with me, they'll either text me or email me to my work account. So with that, I mean, I would think to some extent, a lot of town meeting members would want to just keep the email addresses they have and having a separate email account for the town emails just creates another, you know, like another account that they might not check regularly. I know there's ways to fuse the two that are beyond my experience. But again, you know, I, I think it's fine if it passes and Tommy wants to weigh in on it. And again, I have no strong feelings either way on this one. So this is a public hearing. We do have one hand that's raised, two hands that's raised. So, Mr. Kaminsky.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yep. Can you just say your name for the record?
Yep. My name is Jonathan Kaminsky. I only recently moved to Arlington, though I've lived in the area for a number of years. Uh, I wanted to speak strongly in favor of this proposal or something very much like it. Uh, while I respect the logistical concerns, uh, what that basically boils down to is an excuse to avoid being contactable at all. Now, for the last two years, I lived in New Jersey, and if you want to see what, uh, opaque, uncontactable politics looks like, you should spend some time in New Jersey. Because it was almost impossible to get a hold of anyone who had any decision-making ability over things that directly affected my life until a group of us campaigned at a county board meeting loudly and insistently that they put up at least some contact information for everyone. So even if the logistics of giving everyone a town inbox aren't in play, the fact that there isn't a requirement that they have some means of public contact, the fact that they can list confidential for both their number and their email is, I mean, it's basically just not acceptable. Um, so if not having, giving everyone a town managed email account, at least giving them a mandate to have contact and offering the, them the ability to get a town email account if they don't want to put forward a personal one, seems like well, minimal public service if I'm being totally honest.
And thank you, Mr. Kaminsky. And Ms. Garber.
Hello. I, I'm Judith Garber, Massachusetts Avenue. Um, I'm strongly in support of this warrant article. I think it's a common sense policy that would encourage also more people to run for town meeting if, uh, privacy concerns are a bear, which I actually have heard from a couple of people that expressed interest in running for town meeting, but were nervous about giving out their personal information. Um, and also, like the previous commenter said, to be able to have people more easily contact their town meeting member. Um, I'm also interested, like the, the FOIA concerns are also concerning to me as someone who is um, running for upcoming town meeting. It seems prudent to have your town and personal email accounts separated if someone, um, could use FOIA to look at all your personal emails. Um, but I also definitely hear, um, Ms. Mahan and, um, others about some of the difficulties in setting up town emails as well, and for people who might not, might prefer to use their, uh, personal emails, as Mr. Dick Corsi said, so potentially I would be in favor of, and also because of the, the cost of giving an email account to everyone, I, I would potentially be in favor of providing an option for all town meeting members who want a, a town email address to give them that option. Or for those who don't want that option to be able to put their personal email on, on their contact sheet. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you. And that will close the public commentation, commenting, comments on this warrant article. Um, Mr. Higgins?
It, would it be possible to table this? And, uh, until we can maybe talk to someone from IT about the possibility of setting up aliases? You know, because that, that to me is the, the thing that the only compelling thing about this is the standard format for email addresses because is, I said earlier, you can create another account and that takes care of the, the separation from your personal, uh, account and, and the, the FOIA, um, aspect of it. And with respect to, um, personal safety, I understand that concern. Me, one thing though is that I think people have to have their addresses listed, you know, so, so they are reachable that way. And that is also another way that they can be reached. Me, I know we don't think about US um, PS mail as a way of communicating people, people, but it is there. I mean, and so they can always, you know, send them a letter, me, so they are reachable, uh, that, that way. So it's really the standard email format that, uh, is the thing that is compelling for me. And if IT could explain uh, the possibility of just setting up an alias that doesn't really be required, uh, email address, that would be good. Uh, if that's not possible, me, I hear you, Mr. Heard. I mean, it's like, you know, um, could send it to town meeting, see how they feel about it. I'll just add to that. I know that there are some town meeting members who feel that they are just there to do town meeting. It, uh, they, uh, they don't feel as if they need to do more than that. Uh, and I would say to residents who feel that that's not acceptable, uh, don't vote for them again. Uh, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Dunn?
Mr. Chair, oh, Mr. Dunn, sorry. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so just a, a couple of opportunity to, to respond to a couple of thoughts that I, that are points well taken from some of the speakers, but so FOIA is a federal law and actually doesn't apply. What we've got in Massachusetts is the open meeting law. Uh, and the open meeting law is actually really very specifically written to not encompass town meeting. So like this member, this select board, we can't speak to each other outside of this, about business, uh, with very limited exceptions. But town meeting, actually, the open meeting law doesn't apply. So, uh, people don't have to worry about requests to see their personal email uh, for being in town meeting, that no such legal right exists. That, that, that isn't something. And it is, it is an interesting idea, and, and the town council raised in the memo that he sent to us is that if we do this, that actually might hypothetically change because that town email address does become perhaps open to open meeting law, um, re- review, but that will be a whole new lawsuit all by itself, I think, because you'd have to figure out whether town meeting applied or the town, uh, email property applied. So I guess I, I don't, I don't want anyone to not run because they're worried about someone going into their personal email. It's not going to happen. Uh, my second thought is about whether or not we're providing an open and transparent government. And I agree that if someone isn't sharing a way to contact them, then, um, they probably are not a great representative. And I would say that my, I would encourage, uh, but I think the solution to that is the ballot box. I don't think the solution to that is to put up an email address that they're just not going to pay any attention to, uh, anyway. If we've got, if you have a town meeting member who's non-responsive and not interested in soliciting any input or receiving any input, I just don't think that, you know, the, the way to fix that is, is to vote them out. It isn't to just, uh, put it up with something for them, uh, on the website. I do think that what they're, what, part of what this is getting at, that it is true, is that, that we, uh, we can do better on our town website about how to, how to get the town meeting members in for, we can do better about collecting town meetings, informate members' information. We can do better about how to distribute it. And we can do better ways, uh, to manage the privacy concerns of some, of some town meeting members. I'm, uh, I'm definitely leaning against it because of the cost aspects. I don't think that the cost is worth it. And I think there, there are other solutions, but I'm hesitating to actually make a motion, uh, to see where it goes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
We have a motion. Ms. Mahan? Mrs. Mahan?
Um, I don't think we have a motion. I think Mr. Dunn said he was hesitant. I, I'd move no action.
So I thought you did move no action. This is of course a second, but we can do it.
If that's what happened, uh, then that's fine. I'll stand by that.
This is of course, is that my, was that my understanding?
That's, that's, I, I, I seconded what I thought.
Not even the late part of the motion.
So I'll second it again.
All right. Do you have any additional comments? We have a motion for no action by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Corsi, Attorney Hine.
This is Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn. I'm sorry, Mr. Diggins. Mr. Diggins.
Sorry, I, I was muted and sometimes it's a little hard for me to unmute myself. Oh. I do want to see this go to Tomated. You know, this, uh, I'm sorry, you know, I would say no.
Mr. Dunn. But yeah, I'm sorry. Can I clarify, Mr. Diggins, are you voting for no action?
For, uh, I'm voting against no action.
Okay. Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Heard.
Yes.
Vote is four to one.
Thank you, Ms. Hankin.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to Article twenty-six, home rule legislation, ranked choice voting. Mr. Dennis?
Mr. Chairman, I make a brief statement?
Yes.
Um, I just want to note for, uh, the select board and members of the public that, uh, Mr. Dennis and, uh, I believe Mr. Foster contacted me to make it clear that, um, the, my explanation, uh, for how the ranked choice voting would work in a, a multi-seat race, uh, was inaccurate. So, um, I'll look forward to them providing you a little bit, uh, more clarification on that. And I apologize for getting that wrong to the election modernization committee, uh, the board and any members of the public that I may have confused unintentionally. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Dennis?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so as you may recall, so just to reiterate some of the comments I sent to the board. Um, at last year's special town meeting, uh, the election modernization committee placed three articles in the warrant. And we were grateful to receive the select board's unanimous endorsement of all three for a number of reasons. The complexity of the online, uh, town meeting format being among them, we changed our recommended vote to no action, uh, with the intention of postponing the ranked choice voting article. Uh, we changed just the third article, the ranked choice voting article to no action, with the intention of postponing it for this regular April town meeting. So as promised, we brought it back, um, for consideration, uh, by the board and by town meeting. We used the additional months to study, um, some of the nuances of the application of ranked choice voting to Arlington town elections in greater depth. We worked with the vendor, um, to look more deeply into the actual mechanics. Uh, and we made one substantive change to the proposal, which was to require, um, it appear before the voters, um, on a townwide ballot in the same way that it, it changed from an appointed to an elected town treasurer. And maybe the appointed to elected, uh, town clerk would appear before the ballot. Um, that was something we anticipated would be required by the legislature anyway, so we felt might as, and there was an amendment to that effect last year. We thought might as well bake that into the language of the motion. Our reasons, um, for, um, putting forth ranked choice voting for town elections hasn't changed substantially from the reasons we articulated in our report to town meeting last year. The goals of encouraging more candidates to run, um, thereby boosting voter turnout, ensuring majoritarian outcomes, uh, promoting diverse representation, removing some strategic voting incentives, and fostering civil campaigns are the primary ones. With that, uh, so, you know, as I said, one of the things we did in the interim was to work with the voting machine vendor in a more in-depth way to get some of the precise mechanics of the implementation, get a stronger, uh, hold on what those would be. Uh, one of the great things is that our voting machines already are used for ranked choice voting elections in jurisdictions around the country. And, uh, the vendor sent us some sample ballots. I'll show one, some sample physical ballots. I'll show that on the screen here. You can see first choice, second choice, third choice in bubbled columns with the candidates down left-hand side. And the voter, um, is tasked with, uh, marking their first choice in the first column, and then if they would like their second choice in the second column, and if they have a third choice, a third choice in the third column and so on. And those instructions don't change uh, regardless of how many seats are being elected. Those instructions are the same if we're in a single seat race or a two-seat race or a three-seat race. I have, um, an example tally. We set, we filled out, um, sixty of these ballots by hand, sent them to the vendor. They did a tally for us and I have that to share if you'd like to see how that looks. And, um, I'm happy to answer any other questions about the proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Corsi?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Dennis. I, first of all, for all the work that you and the committee have done since you began on, on, on various issues, and I know you've been busy, had a lot of meetings and, um, really impressed by the fact that, uh, you know, you're, you're posting your minutes, the, the detailed discussions are there and you really can see um, what's going on. And, um, I do have some questions and, and I want to thank Attorney Hine for the clarification. I was a little confused, or not because I knew that it was, it, it wasn't the right thing. It, it just, I've been having a little trouble following this as, as well because this has really evolved since you came before us last spring. At, at, at that time, it, it seemed like there was a, a simpler, um, bylaw change than, than, than what's here now. And, um, you, we've had the experience in, in November with, while Arlington overwhelmingly supported ranked choice voting across the Commonwealth, it wasn't supported, but, um, I, I just had a question for you in terms of, um, we, we had an experience last year with the clerks race that had ranked choice voting been in place, it would have been applied because Ms. Brazil won with thirty-nine percent of the vote. Um, and as I look back on that election and, and how it ended, I didn't see a lot of people um, talking about, okay, I wish we had ranked choice voting to, to, to see what would have happened. So I, I, I've got some questions about this. I, I appreciate intent here, but, um, I'd like to hear from, from some of the others, but maybe if you could just talk a little bit about what, how the recommended vote has changed since you had your discuss last fall, which I think just talk a little bit about what, how the recommended vote has changed since you had your discussion last fall, which I think a lot of that surrounded two-seat, two-seat races, where, how, how that gets divided up.
Yeah, actually, the recommendation hasn't changed, but I think there wasn't a lot of focus the last time around on how this is applied to multi-seat elections. And we've just had a lot more discussions about that. The only substantive change we made in the proposal was to require this go before the voters. There was another question in there. So with respect to the clerks race, actually, we, I heard a good number of people saying, oh, I wish I had ranked choice voting in the clerks race, that I had preferences among those three that I wasn't able to express. There was a candidate maybe I didn't like, strongly didn't like, and I had two I kinda liked, one a little bit more than the other, and I wasn't able to indicate that nuance. And it could be that one candidate in the race might play a spoiler and spoil the chances of my first choice. So I did hear interest in ranked choice voting in that election. And one of the other phenomenons is that often people, I've heard from candidates that have chosen not to run because they are afraid they might split the vote, or we're told, do not run because you will split the vote. And that's one of the key things we're looking to fix as well. Yes, we're trying to get to the right outcome when you have three candidates or four candidates in a race. But we also wanna have more races like that. And sometimes people choose not to run at all because they might face this vote-splitting situation.
And just a question on outreach, and I, I think from your meetings in the fall, one of the concerns that you had in pulling the, the article from the special town meeting was because we're in COVID, you really didn't have an opportunity for public outreach. And unfortunately, we may still have those issues. So do you have concerns about the amount of outreach that can be done? And I'm not trying to get you to push things off, but I'm just wondering if, how you've addressed that situation, if at all.
Yeah, we have less concerns this time around. Last time around, you know, we had three articles. And so when we met at precinct meetings and when we talked to different groups, we had to talk about all three articles. And now we have one article in the warrant, so it's easier for us to focus and hone in on just this one. We had a meeting with the, we had a meeting with FinCom already, and we didn't have a meeting with FinCom last time around. We've talked to, you know, one of the proponents of the, of an amendment last time around was Adam Oster, and he had proposed an amendment. And we had sort of a, I was able to briefly talk to him before town meeting last time around, but this time around, we were able to invite him to our meeting and hear him out and discuss his concerns and talk through what we saw as the pros and cons of the different approaches. And then I also think at town meeting itself that members are more, will be more adjusted to the online format, and will have the kind of robust discussion that we need to be able to hear this out and come to a educated decision. So for those reasons, I think, I think we can make it happen this time and, and have the kind of discussion we need.
Okay. And just in terms of timing, you talked about a proposal to go back to the voters. So if you can just lay it out as you're proposing, go to town meeting this spring, when, when would it go to the voters if it was successful at town meeting?
So if it was successful at town meeting, you know, barring a special election for any reason, then the soonest it would go before the voters is probably April of 2022. And hopefully by then, the state legislature has approved the home rule petition. And so the first election under ranked choice on that timeline would be April 2023.
All right. Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move approval, first of all. As Mr. Dennis, Greg, but Mr. Dennis has pointed out in the Election Modernization Committee, there has been at least two years, discussion, investigation, and information provided on this. One of the other things that was sort of positive point for me was that, along with the legislature taking action, is the voters of Arlington also having a say on this. And since I have the bully puppet, I'd like to take advantage of having Mr. Dennis and others from the Election Modernization Committee or other Arlington residents. When this was on the state ballot before, and this is just an FYI, use this information not as a criticism, but just coming from me. I received probably fifty to seventy through the mail, snail mail, or in person with the phone number attached, mostly from a long time and some new time Arlington residents who were seventy-two plus that were confused by ranked choice voting and said to me, well, can I still just vote, or do I have to do this ranked choice thing? And what I found out was, after I did follow-up with them weeks later, instead of answering the initial question, which for those voters, there's some people that just wanna vote one way, and that's it, and they see ranked choice voting as taking away that opportunity. For, if we could somehow get the message out, you can still just vote one person. The answers they were getting was, well, your vote won't count because you can vote one, two, three, four, five, which they got the message that you can't, if you're confused by voting five different candidates and ranking them, your vote won't count. So if we can somehow get the message out, especially to that community, that you can still vote the way you did if you don't wanna do ranked choice voting. But this is, you know, another way to vote. That's just something that I observed, including with my own parents who were eighty-two and eighty-four, because what they said to me is, I'm fifty-eight years old, but they call me Baby G. They're like, Baby G, we know nothing about politics. Just tell us when we should vote for you. And, you know, sorry to say that. It looks like my parents just bullied me since I've ran since ninety-seven, didn't win till ninety-nine, but they don't get involved in politics, and they're from that generation. So I definitely move favorable action, and I just wanted to pass that along since you are a captured audience. That, that's been my experience. Thank you.
That is helpful. No, thank you.
Mrs. Diggins.
I will second the motion, you know, and I appreciate all the links that you've sent me, Mr. Dennis. Me and I appreciate the argument that increases, you know, the diversity in those who are running. I was a little, I was a little surprised on the negative, be that the long-term increase in turnout, at least in one of the papers, was only a two to seven percent. I would have hoped it would be larger than that, but hey, we'll take anything. But that, you, you, you said that you have an example for us, you know, can we see?
Yeah, I can, I can show you an example with the permission of the chair. I can share my screen and show. It looks like I have the option available to me here. Okay, so I showed the ballot earlier. Here is a sample ballot, let me that has been scanned by the tabulator machine. So it works very much the same way you see the ballot in the scanner. This is the information it scanned. Three Musketeers is this voter's first choice. Almond Joy their second choice. Werther, Werther Original's third choice, Junior Min's fourth choice, Peppermint Patty fifth choice. Declined to indicate a six, seven, or eight choice, which would have been write-ins if they wanted to. Again, you can, as to Mrs. Mahan's point, you can rank just your first choice and leave the rest blank if you so choose. Or for just first and second. This was, they prepared for me a fi, a three-seat race with five candidates, a two-seat race with two candidates, with four candidates, excuse me, and a one-seat race with two candidates. So in this case, it doesn't trigger ranked choice voting because there's not enough candidates running. In a one-seat race, you would have to have at least three candidates. So this is how it is scanned by the machine, and this is the data that it produced, if you can see that on your screen. So I know we don't have a district town councillor seat, but this is the vendor made up the names of the offices. So it scanned that information in this format. And this information is stored in the voting machines, and then when the voting machines go back to town hall, that information is uploaded and tabulated. So the pro, which is the same process we follow today. So that process is all the same. I think people here, if they're familiar with how it's counted, are probably familiar with the single-seat case. What I have here is an example of how we elect multiple people using it. And it does become admittedly a little bit more complicated when you elect multiple people. What I've simulated here with is sixty ballots. And we try to create a situation in which a majority of the public, about sixty percent of the public doesn't like mint-flavored candies. They like Almond Joy, Three Musketeers, and Werther's Original, but they don't like Junior Min's or Peppermint Patty. But a significant minority, the rest, really like mint-flavored candies. So we can see how that would look. In a normal, in a single-seat ranked choice voting race, you would be required to win fifty percent of the votes. So with sixty ballots, you would need at least thirty-one, thirty-plus one, thirty-one votes to win. While that threshold is too high if you're, if you want three people to win. So the threshold, the number of votes you need is lowered to basically just mathematically the, the amount at which you're guaranteed a seat. So it's sixty votes, three seats. If you do the math, you will realize that once one candidate gets sixteen votes, they are guaranteed a seat. It becomes impossible for a fourth candidate to get sixteen votes. So once a candidate reaches sixteen votes, they have won. And the tabulation starts by just counting the first choices on the ballots. And if we just look at the first choices, Almond Joy is twenty first choices, Junior Min seven, Three Musketeers twelve, and so on. Almond Joy has more than sixteen votes and wins right away in the first round, thirty-three percent of the vote. Now, they have more than enough votes than they need to win. And this is the difference between the multi-seat and the single-seat, not only the reduced threshold, but they have four more votes, Almond Joy has four more votes than they need to win, and we don't want those four votes to be wasted. We wanna maximize that voter's voice. And these voters had second choices on their ballots, and Almond Joy didn't need all twenty votes in order to win. Now, if this were Cambridge, what Cambridge would do is an old-fashioned way of doing it, which is they would take four of these ballots at random and count them to their second choices instead. Well, that's not entirely fair. It's approximately fair, but it's not entirely fair because those votes go to whichever four lucky people get their ballots chosen as counting towards their second choice. So what is done instead, the modern way of doing it, is instead you take a fraction of every single Almond Joy ballot from all of those winners' ballots. So Almond Joy doesn't need, you can take away a fifth of every one of Almond Joy's votes and to leave them exactly at sixteen, and count that fifth of a vote towards the second choices. So if you look at Almond Joy's votes, of those twenty, one had Junior Min second, thirteen had Three Musketeers second, three had Werther's Original second, one had Peppermint Patty second, and two had nobody second. So you can count these each at a fifth of a value to, to eliminate, to transfer four of Almond Joy's votes. And Junior Mix picks up point two of vote, Three Musketeers picks up two point six votes, Werther's Original picks up point six votes. And then you look to see if anybody has crossed the threshold of sixteen votes. No one has. And if no one's, no one's crossed the threshold, and you still haven't filled up all the seats, then you go back to the familiar thing from the single-seat case of eliminating the lowest vote getter, which is the write-in candidate. And everybody that voted for this candidate, which was one person, has their vote counted towards their second choice. That one ballot had Werther's Original second, so that goes to Werther's Original. Still, nobody is above the sixteen, so we eliminate the next lowest vote getter, which is Junior Min's, which currently has seven point two votes. Those get transferred to those second choices. And now Peppermint Patty is above the threshold, twenty-one point two votes, wins the second seat. And again, when somebody wins, you take their excess votes and their surplus votes and distribute them according to the second-choice votes on those ballots. Those get distributed. And now Three Musketeers wins the third seat. So a majority of the public, about sixty percent of the public, didn't like Min's. And they won, that majority won two of the three seats available. They won, Almond Joy won, and Three Musketeers won. But the, the mint voters was formed, had a significant minority of the vote, and they were able to pick up one of the three seats. And so when you do it this way, in this, when you do the multi-seat election in this way, the tabulation, tally, yes, is a little complicated, but what it gets at is representing the diversity of the views of the voters. So the majority of people wanted one thing, they got a majority of seats, but there was a significant minority viewpoint that was able to win one of the three seats. So that's it played out in its full glory there. Is that, is that helpful, Mr. Diggins?
Yes, yes, I mean, I like seeing all the rounds to be calculated, and you get a sense of how the fractional voting, you know, comes into play. All I can say is, good luck explaining it. And, you know, how, how do you imagine, well, how have recounts been handled in these situations?
They've been, I, I mean, there's, places have recounted these, and you know, you, there's a couple of different ways you can do it, but you can follow the standard tally just by hand. So you sort the ballots by their first choices, and you see, you know, who's ever above, if that pile is above the number of votes they need, that candidate has won. And if not, then you look at what their surplus is, and you calculate the the fraction that you have to transfer. And so it's, it's doable. Cities and towns do it. I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I mean, and essentially, I mean, they can, they can, they can do it by hand in an efficient way, so that, so for people who, you just have to have a hand recount, it can be done.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's different because this is not following the Cambridge model. The Cambridge model requires that all the ballots stay in the precise order that they were originally, and so you have them around in the same order.
Right.
The, the fractional surplus approach, although it's, you know, more, you know, there's sort of like some math involved.
Right.
Which can scare people, although that's true. It means that you don't have to keep the ballots in order. It's, it's fair and precise and exact.
Yeah, I prefer the, I prefer this, this way, you know, so.
The task for the voter, though, so you put the tally aside, right? The task for the voter is tell us your first-choice candidate. Do you have a second choice? Tell us your second-choice candidate. Do you have a third? Tell us your third. You can stop whenever you want. So what is, what is incumbent upon the voter is relatively straightforward. Who's your first choice? Who's your second choice? That's it. I think it is very important to have clear explanations of how the tally works, particularly in the multi-seat case where it's more involved. And there's a lot of different tutorials and videos and things like that for people who wanna dig into it. But for the average voter, it's not, you don't have to know that. You just have to know who's my second choice, you know, do I have one? And that's it.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. That's all for me. Thank you. Excellent example.
I definitely have questions, but I also see that Adam Oster is in the audience and has his hand raised, and so I'm gonna wait until I hear more from him.
All right.
I can stop sharing whenever you would like me to.
Getting confused. Yes, so my only comments, I mean, I, I've been impressed by all the presentations we've had on ranked choice voting, and I certainly understand the, the benefits of it in getting, you know, more voices to people that might not otherwise be able to get elected to an office. I think, you know, it came forward at the, the special time meeting in the fall, and it got pulled back because of a lack of understanding. And I think, to me, where you change the way people are elected, I think will ultimately, this will be the way we elect officials in Arlington, because I, I think it is beneficial. I would like to see us wait maybe until, to see if we had a special Tommy in the fall or a Tommy next year, where we can have post-COVID some real informational sessions that people that, you know, might wanna attend in person, or a little more dissemination of information about it, where I think When, when it comes to electing officials. We should educate both, you know, us as the board who are voting on this town meeting members, but also just the public at large. So before town meeting votes, we give the residents and voters of Arlington an understanding of ranked choice voting and. Give them the opportunity to inform their town meeting. Members of how they would like to. How they would like their town being members of it. We just had talked about an article where we talked about discuss. The accessibility of town meeting members. So again, you know, I, I like everything I hear about it and I think it's, it's good for the town. I just think we're, you know, we're still in this COVID bubble where it's hard to. To get people in a room and this, we don't know. How many people are able to or even willing to attend. Virtual based informational sessions. Where I think if we could push this out. And make sure before this goes to town meeting that. Everyone in town is able to fully understand what it is their town meeting members who they elect are voting on. But you know, I'd certainly hear. From the board, a lot of support for this as well. And I, I know we've always been impressed by the presentations on, on this particular issue, but. I'll also look for the public comments that we. That we get. Mr. Dennis, if, if you can stop, so I only have you on my screen. It's like we're having a conversation.
Sorry.
That's all right. It's a very intimate conversation on a Warner medical hearing. All right, so. With that, we'll open up the public comment section of this hearing and first up is Mr. Schlickman.
Thank you very much. I'd like to share my screen as well.
Mr. Chaplin.
So let me see.
I'm hoping it's more cat pictures, Paul.
I, I, no, I did, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't get a cat picture in here. I, I will. If I'd known, I would have put one in. I'm looking for the share screen button. Is, is it enabled? Oh, there it is. I'd like to urge you to take no action on Article twenty-six because no action is the right choice when this ranked choice voting is before us. Ranked choice voting has a history in Massachusetts. As you know, that in twenty twenty. Mr. Dennis proposed statewide ranked choice voting and there were a couple of commitments that were made. At the time in the campaign, and if we go back and take a look at the initiative petition. Ranked choice voting would be used in primary and general elections for all Massachusetts statewide offices. It would not apply to local offices. So when people were receiving a lot of information. About ranked choice voting, they were told it would not apply to local offices. So nobody thought about it locally. At least during the campaign. The other thing that was made. Public and was very prominent in the description. That was sent out by the Secretary of the State is ranked choice voting would only be used in races. Where a single candidate is to be declared the winner. And not in races where more than one person is elected. And that's very important to note. Because ranked for choice voting in races where more than one person is elected. Takes votes away from voters. The presentation you saw where Almond Joy won. That was nuts, by the way. Took votes away from voters. So let's look at an election for three members of the Hogwarts Board of Wizards. Under our current system in races where more than one person is elected, voters have the same number of votes. As seats to be filled. This ballot under a conventional method, the way we use, counts votes for three candidates. So Ron Weasley gets a vote. Hermione Granger gets a vote. Harry Potter gets a vote. And Voldemort does not. In ranked choice voting, where there's more than one person elected, voters have only one vote, one vote, not three, one vote. But they can rank their preferences. And this is a sample ranked choice ballot. If Hermione Granger is not the fourth place finisher after the first count. This ballot will count for Hermione Granger and only for Hermione Granger. If Hermione Granger is the fourth place finisher after the first count. This ballot will be transferred to Ron Weasley and will count for only Ron Weasley. Why does this matter? Because if Hogwarts has twice as many wizards as Death Eaters. Under our current voting system in a race to elect three candidates. The wizards generally will use all three votes to support three candidates. The Death Eaters will bullet vote using only one of their votes for Voldemort. And you'd end up with results something like this. You'd have. Weasley, Granger and Harry Potter winning. And Voldemort trailing badly, he'd be defeated. And life is good. But if Hogwarts has twice as many wizards as Death Eaters under ranked choice voting in a race to elect three candidates. The wizards will generally split their votes among the three candidates. And the Death Eaters will cast their first choice. Vote for Voldemort. And you could end up with voting results like this after the first round. Weasley thirty-three, thirty-two, Granger three, thirty-seven, Potter three, thirty-five. And Voldemort five oh-two and Weasley is defeated. And Voldemort, Granger and Potter are elected. So Ron Weasley's campaign message under the current system. Right now is please give me one of your three votes. And it's a friendly message. Under ranked choice voting. Ron has to be more aggressive. He can't say, give me one of your three votes. He says, please make me your first choice vote. Because the candidate can only rely upon the vote. If it's the first place vote. Because instead of having three votes. The voter only has one. Ranked choice voting doesn't remove strategic voting. It just changes the strategy. Ranked choice voting doesn't foster civil campaigns. Instead of sharing one of three votes, candidates have to be more competitive and more aggressive. Looking to get one vote and the top preference. Ranked choice voting doesn't ensure majoritarian elections because Voldemort wins without majority support. And our new voting equipment can run ranked choice voting, but just because we can do it. Doesn't mean we should do it. So we want to make sure that edge, election returns are aligned to election problems. Take a look at the issues that people have and the desires that they have. To make elections better. And we need to make sure that election reforms do not create new problems. No action is the right choice for Article twenty-six and I'm urging you to vote no action on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlickman. And Mr. Oster. Can you say a name for the record? Think you need to unmute.
Yeah, I thought that would happen automatically. Thanks, thanks again. Nice to see everybody. Strange to see everybody. And I want to start by just praising generally the work of the Elections Committee. They've already produced actionable items for town meeting to improve elections if you were able to vote on. I really enjoyed meeting with them. I almost convinced them. The vote was very close. They almost convinced me. And I'd also like to thank Greg, who, you know, for, for talking to me at different points, but also for a sort of introducing this idea. That the, the process for, that is proposed for the multi-seat elections like for school board and for select board. Really is kind of, of difference. I, I would just add that. There are other forms of ranked choice voting that are not like that. The, the proposal is really for a kind variation of the proportional representation system that they have in Cambridge, although there are some differences. And. Where. Mr. Schlickman. Kept on saying. Ranked choice voting and RCV, I think he really should have been criticizing some aspects of the proportionality of it. Not the ranked choice of it. And I'll try to explain that. But mostly I'd like to focus on those differences because that's kind of what, what, what my testimony is about. And what they mean in practice and how they would affect the town. So I would also like to share. My screen, although I'm not sure that I can. Is that, and I ought to have?
Mr. Chapdeline will enable that for you.
You should have it now, Mr. Oster.
Okay. This is. This is really sort of it, but I wanted to sort of. Highlight what I think are some of the major differences. Between two different ways that you could do ranked choice voting with. To multiple seat elections and this, these numbers are for two seat. Elections such as you might have other with the select board. So you could do ranked choice voting that is. Very like the kind that people have sort of come to know about because of the question two campaign. Where the threshold is a majority, it's fifty percent plus one. In the proportional system, it would be thirty-three percent plus one. In the majority system, you could cast votes that would elect two people. In the proportional system, as, as Paul Schlickman pointed out, one vote elects only one person. And I want to say that this is, some people might find this kind of a unusual idea that you'd say, you don't have to win a majority. You sort of constitute a faction and the majority faction wins the majority of seats. Actually like that idea in a lot of ways. I used to live in Cambridge. I helped a friend to win a seat on the Cambridge City Council using this system. And beyond that, I, I, I find a very appealing the idea that. More views get elevated in a setting where there can be a conversation, negotiation, give and take. I think it's actually a very clever idea and it, and it can be very appropriate for legislative bodies. I don't feel that way about a collective executive. Like the select board and I'd like to invite you to think about what's different. So if we adopt this proposal. Four out of five of you or of your seats would be filled by not a majority, but by essentially a minority block or faction. So under this system. You can't get more than thirty-three and a third of the vote. That's. That's the idea. It's. One member, on the other hand, is elected under different rules, which is another change. Selectment board members would be answering to different groups. And by the way, if the select board continues the practice of just rotating the chair every year. Then four fifths of the time, the board will be chaired by someone who is elected by only a third of the votes. Big deal or not, I just want you to think about it. I don't think that this changes who you are. I don't think that it changes your commitment to serving the whole town. But I do think that it changes your relationship to the town. And I think that it changes your relationship to each other. And that after all is the purpose of the change. It can also change who gets elected, which is also the purpose of the change. So I ask you to think carefully about what those changes will mean. Like in five or ten, twenty years when everybody's elected that way. So. There's one aspect of it, sort of the Lord Voldemort aspect of it, that I actually don't think is such a big deal. All right, but suppose you've got. A member on the board who. Was elected on the basis of. Stopping the sinister takeover of the town by. The MAPC and the MMA and forcing everyone to ride bicycles and raise their taxes and everything. And so they vote something like.
Mr. Oster. Can I just ask you, because you're going to, these are supposed to be three minutes. I give, I've given you got you and Mr. Schlickman, the town meeting. Timeframe, but you're coming up on seven minutes, if you could just.
I beg your pardon. I'm afraid I got a little carried away. I, I guess, you know, I think that there are some general issues and. I have a specific concern, which has to do with competitive grants. Which aren't guaranteed and where we have seen. Are sometimes awarded on the basis of how much public support there is perceived to be for the grant. We started with the Mass Ave project where the project was delayed for a year. While the Federal Highway Administration had Arlington basically prove that there was public support. And. At, at that time, it was settled by a unanimous vote of the select board and I think the unanimity was important. I think it would have been problematic if there had been a member of the select board who had dissented at that point. And in fact. You might recall that the, the leader of the opposition ran for this, for the, for the board four times. And drew forty percent of the vote. Under this system. She would have been elected and that would have happened. And I don't know what would have happened after that, but. I just don't think that it's. In the interest of the town to have the executive board. For the town be done that way. We've got a town meeting that's open. We have a process that's open. I believe very strongly that, you know, everyone is entitled to speak. Everyone is entitled to access. A town meeting, we have a rule.
And if you could just wrap up your comment.
I'm gonna wrap up. That the, the minority is absolutely entitled to be heard and they're not entitled to prevail. I did have more to say. I'm sorry I've gone on at such length. But I just earnestly ask the select board to consider some of the ramifications of this. Which I think are only coming to light tonight. Thanks.
All right, this. And we have one more public commentator, Mr. Kaminsky.
Hello again, Jonathan Kaminsky. I will be as brief as possible. I just wanted to say, having heard Mr. Schlickman and Mr. Oster's presentations. What I'm hearing is that a candidate who is effectively at, who's effective at garnering first choice votes. Among a minority will gain a seat. And in response to the comment that the minority is entitled to be heard but not entitled to prevail, I would argue that. The difference under this new system is that the minority is entitled to be heard at the level of being represented in government, but they are not entitled to have a majority. Of the governing body regardless. So. I primarily regard these concerns as a feature rather than a bug. Given, you know, putting aside the specific examples that they used, in reality. Giving the minority a representative voice is seldom a bad thing in terms of providing governance that covers every member of. The population it's supposed to govern.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. With your permission, I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Dennis. So Greg, with the, starting, I guess, with Paul Schickman's presentation about his example, is he broadly right about how his calculation about how that would turn out?
What what he was incorrect about was that your vote is always going to count for one candidate. He is right that you only get one vote, but as we saw in the Almond Joy example, you may have only, the Almond Joy may only need, you know, 80% of your vote. And the remainder of your vote may count towards your second choice if if they have more than enough votes. So your vote may count for multiple candidates.
I'm I'm not asking, so I hear you. But my question is, is the result different?
No, he is right that like in that situation, the Death Eaters, right? It's a little bit of a, you know, demonization scenario of the political minority. But the political minority, yes, in that situation does win a seat. As as Mr. Kaminsky said, that's a feature, not a bug.
Okay, thank you. All right, my second question is that is exactly, it's along those, it's along that same line then, is what, so you, so the, why did the modernization committee choose that format? As opposed to one that would have led to like, so you like, correct me if I'm wrong, but like you, there, you could have chosen a different voting system where the three would win and not the not the fourth. And but you chose to go this way, which is arguably, it should make proportional voting does seem to be like a reasonable description of it. Tell, what are, how did that thought process go? What what carried the day?
Yeah, we spent a lot of time talking about that in in the meeting that Mr. Oster was at and the meeting afterwards. The the argument that carried the day was ultimately that it is going to do a better job of representing the diversity of the views of the public in that we should not be outcome oriented around looking to specific cases of, oh, somebody I disagreed with might have got a seat. But what is the principle here? What is the principle we're after? And the norm for multi-member electing, multi-member bodies around the world is with some form of proportional representation so that all viewpoints are heard in proportion to their prevalence. So if you are, if you can capture, you know, 30, a third of the vote, maybe you deserve a third of the seats. You're not going to win, that viewpoint isn't going to win a majority vote on the board, but they will be heard. So that was the viewpoint that carried the day. As Mr. Oster said, it did come down to a close vote between our proposal and his proposal. And I'll spend a little bit of time just distinguishing them a little bit. The ballots are the same between what he's proposing and not proposing. They're identical in the tally in the single seat case. They only differ in how it's tallied in the multi-seat case. And it was a close vote, but a number of the people that voted for his proposal voted for it not because they thought it was superior, but but because they thought it would be more viable, both in front of town meeting and on a townwide ballot to the voters, that it would be an incremental stepping stone, maybe to consider, okay, maybe we could do it proportionally in the future. But a a majority of the committee said, no, we're we're, if we're going to change the voting method anyway, let's do the principled thing and let's do the method we think is best. So that is, that's the debate that was had. Hope that clarifies things.
Thank you. So I really enjoyed your present, your presentation was really informative. Paul's was really informative. I think Adam's got also has a really interesting point. For me, the the single seat is a slam dunk, yes. In the multi-seat, I think I'm probably wrestling with it in the same way your committee did. That's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do think that, if I may say an additional word, I do think that if your concern is the proportionality, the right solution to that is Mr. Oster's amendment, not no action. I think that is the right way to approach it. But the committee does feel that the the original, as proposed, is the best way of going about it.
Any additional comments? Mr. Corsi?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I want to thank all all three speakers tonight. And you can see from, and thank you, Mr. Dennis, for sharing how the debate went at the Election Modernization Committee. I had been told that it was a very close vote. And for me, with the information that was presented tonight, I I don't want to vote no action, but I'm not comfortable based on what's before me right now to take a vote. But I I feel like we need a little time to to absorb what was presented to us this evening. So I'm going to move to table this, Mr. Chairman, until I believe our next meeting is on the the 22nd. Because I I'd like the opportunity, first of all, to hear from Attorney Heim, because I'd like to give him an opportunity to update the comments based on the conversations he's had. I'd like to take a further look at what Mr. Schlickman has done and what Mr. Dennis presented to us. And Mr. Oster sent us emails over the weekend, like an opportunity to talk to him as well. And they, they're all good points. And I think, you know, we want to get in the right direction. But I think you can show, you can see from this discussion this evening, how complicated it can get. And I personally am not comfortable voting one way or the other based on what's before me right now.
Second.
Mr. Dennis, can I ask you a question? So we talked about earlier that the goal was to implement this by the April 20, based on the timeframe, the April 2023 election, correct? So was there any thought into having a ballot question next year? And then putting this forth on the warrant next year whereby the town meeting members would be voting right after the the town votes on the ballot question? And then assuming it gets passed and passed, that still gives about a year for the state to ratify the change before the April 2023 election.
We hadn't discussed that possibility. So in that case, it would probably be some sort of advisory question on the ballot and then appear on the warrant. I think I might want Attorney Heim to weigh in on this, but the legislature usually requite for electoral changes requires the voters have a townwide ballot where they approve of the change. And I would want to have some, if we went that route, I would probably want some security that that advisory question would, in advance of a town meeting vote on specific legislation, would be sufficient for the legislature to view as enough of a ratification by the voters to pass it. And I'm not sure if they, I'm not sure if it if it would. Or if if that question could be more binding in such a way, maybe it could be. I'm not aware of whether it can.
And I would say to Attorney Heim, unless you want to answer, now we have a motion to table. If you want to take some time to to see whether that's an option.
Sure, I'd be happy to present a sort of slate of options for the board. It's an interesting question about whether or not you can just put a ballot question on without it going to town meeting first for the accompanying special legislation. I'd have to think about it a little bit with there's way to do that.
Yeah. And it could be that that's not possible. It's just one way to do it with, where you can hear from the voters and then town meeting can vote based on on what they see from town results. And it gives you that opportunity to educate people. All right, so we do have, we have a motion to table that's been seconded. Mrs. Mahan, you want to withdraw your motion to approve based on Mr. Corsi's motion or?
Oh, yes, I will. If I could ask through you, Mr. Chair, to Attorney Heim, if he could just address in his comments to us, am I correct or incorrect that if we went with a townwide advisory ballot vote, then we would have to go to town meeting for their vote? And then we would have to have an official townwide town vote? If you could, if that's the case, if you could say that in your memorandum to us, if it's not, if you could state that that's not the case, thank you.
I understand, Ms. Mahan, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And so we have a motion to table that's been seconded, Attorney Heim.
This is Mahan.
I'm impressed you understood my question, yes.
I think I got it. You were talking about a non-binding referendum locally. And then town meeting, do we have to then come back and have a binding ballot question? I'll definitely look at that and make sure I I got it.
Yeah, that's what I I meant to say, thank you. Yes, yes, on the motion to table.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Unanimous vote to table.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. All right. Close is more article hearings brings us to final votes and comments. We have articles for review for final votes and comments. Article 12.
Say a quick word on this. I just, because I want to just note that I got some feedback from board members, which is, which is great individual feedback from board members. Some of these comments are easier to encapsulate the conversation than others. So I just want to make sure that all board members know that I'm very receptive to feedback and that the public knows that I'm trying to distill a conversation. If I get anything wrong about it, I I trust that the board members will correct me. Doesn't necessarily always in the first try perfectly reflect what can sometimes be complicated conversations about difficult subjects. I'm sorry, thank you, Mr.
So actually, in the interest of time, is I call out the articles. We have the final votes and comments from Attorney Heim. Just chime in if there's any comments, changes, additions, modifications that you have on those particular articles. Then Attorney Heim, we can vote all of these in one vote, right, for final votes and comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yep. Article 12, Bylaw Amendment Changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Article 13, Bylaw Amendment Adding Juneteenth Independence Day to Holidays. Article 78, Resolution Tree Canopy as a Public Health Resource. Article 80, Resolution Facilities Department Report Clarify Responsibilities Track Progress of the Department of the Facilities and Maintenance. Article 82, Resolution Advance Registration in Organization of Town Meeting Speakers. Article 83, Resolution Protocols for Deliberative Collaboration in Town Government Initiated Citizen. And that's where it leaves off on on my agenda.
Sorry, it looks like this is.
Article 84, Resolution Formally Invite Arlington Housing Authority Representatives to Present to Town Meeting. Article 85, Resolution Acknowledging Native Lands. Article 86, Resolution Celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Yeah, on that one, I I had a brief conversation with Attorney Heim. But I also, we, Mr. Kuro had had made the the motion. I I had a brief conversation with him and I hadn't completed that. And I'm wondering if the final comments on this one, if if we could pull this and bring it back for the next meeting, because I just want to close that conversation and get back to Attorney Heim at some point over the next week or two.
Article 87, Resolution Overnight Parking Weaver for Residents of Multi-Family Dwelling in Precinct 4. Article 88, Resolution Resident Parking Program for Precinct 4. Article 91, Resolution to Declare Climate Emergency in the Town of Arlington. All right, with that, I will see a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I apologize. I I didn't get to, I didn't submit 91. It's an oversight on my part. So 91 is 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 still in the works with 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 Park. Thank you.
All right, so I'll look for motion to approve Article 12, 1378, 80, 82, 83, 84, 85, 87, 88. And a motion to table. Article 86, that'd be correct?
That's right. Yes. Okay.
Anyone? Mr. Dunn?
So moved with a comment that I've got, as you all know, I'm in a interesting position that I have, I missed a couple hearings because it happened before I started. And if I had a strong opinion that there was, that I thought the board was heading in the wrong direction, I would let you know and I would signify that with a vote. One with a couple others, I'm just, I'm I'm signing on to the work of of the rest of the board without having actually had the hearing. I personally am comfortable with that. I believe that's how previous, you know, new members have worked on it. Or and I just wanted to really clarify that for everyone, what my attitude and thoughts were going into this vote.
Mr. Corsi?
Second.
Any additional comments, Ms. Mahan?
No, thank you.
Any additional comments, Ms. Diggins?
I think, thank you, Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Heim did a good job of 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 summarizing things, you know. I I think it's going to be incumbent upon me to explain to people that my dissenting votes aren't as dissenting as they seem. It's more, I'm really very much on the same page with the thoughts and feelings about how the board feels towards the the resolutions. Me, my, my, my desire though was to see these go before town meeting. And I want to explain what I mean by that, because I used that phrase earlier today. Because as Mr. Dunn has pointed out, everything will go before town meeting. But it's a matter of how it goes, meaning when we vote no action, you know, then then generally those things, those things that we vote no action are put into the consent agenda. And and the only way, you know, to get it to then go before town meeting is to put it in a substitute motion. And I know that people can do that way, but my intention was to just make it easier to get the resolutions in particular in front of town meeting for it. Make it easier, that's all I have to say on that. So just one way to explain, my dissent is not as much a dissent as it seems. Thank you.
All right. And so Attorney Heim, we have a motion to approve and one motion to table.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. And just as a quick note for members of the board and the public, I will plan to bring the entire report back before the board, as has been our practice in the last couple of years, for a sort of comprehensive review of it, where if there's, you know, any further, you know, thoughts or elaborations in respect to like Mr. Dunn, your posture, we can definitely include those things in the in the report. So with that, on on the motion to second, Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, sorry, yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
It's unanimous vote.
Thank you. New business.
I just want to note that Representative Garbley's office has been in touch with me. They've been working hard on the pieces of special legislation that were submitted following the November special town meeting. And they're underway with a few questions and legal issues that they want to make sure are sorted out. These are a little bit more complicated than some of the typical home rule petitions we've we've put in front of folks with things like the fossil fuel service lines and things like that. So I just want to highlight that and we're getting moving on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chapdeline?
A continued thanks to the Health and Human Services Department and all the other town departments that have been assisting them in providing vaccination clinics. Where, as the board knows, no longer doing first dose clinics, but we still have remaining second dose clinics, as well as senior housing and homebound seniors to vaccinate. They continue to do a great job. I know, I think the board heard some feedback from an attendee last week with just the level of care provided. We'll continue to advocate, as Ms. Mahan touched on earlier in the evening, to once again be able to vaccinate locally. But main thing I wanted to say tonight was a, but once again, thank you to Health and Human Services and all the departments supporting them and the work that they've been doing.
Thank you. Ms. Diggins?
No comment, just a question. Do you think we'll need to meet on the 24th, given the number of articles? Given the number of articles that we have, I just want to have a sense of whether I need to keep that date open for another select board meeting.
Um, I'll review the articles and I'll have the select board office get in touch.
Okay.
Answer.
All right, thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two things. First of all, I want to congratulate Maddie Kropalka, who was named the Middle Sex League Most Valuable Player in Girls Hockey, only a sophomore. And I know we have a very proud grandmother watching this evening. So congratulations to Maddie on, on an outstanding year. The second thing I wanted to mention is this Thursday night at seven thirty is the continued public hearing in the, in the Mugar matter before the zoning board of appeals. And unfortunately, in this environment, I, I think that that hearing, had it been a town hall, probably would have been jam packed. But I just wanted to alert people. It's one of the, the last sessions before the public hearing closes and it's very important. I'm planning on attending and I hope as many people as possible can attend that as well. Thank you.
Snodden?
No new business, thank you.
And Mrs. Mahan?
No new business, thank you.
All right. And I did want to congratulate Ms. Kropalka's granddaughter as well, Maddie. I saw that as a sophomore. And I did want to acknowledge too, even though she doesn't live in Arlington, but my cousin's daughter Maddie was a Middle Sex League All-Star as well on that team as an eighth grader. So so Maddie's a good hockey game, I guess. Um, then I did just want to mention, so you, you know, I served on the park and advisory committee for the board. So as we meet on a regular basis now, so I do, we, we've heard a lot, particularly from Mrs., Ms. Dominguez in her warrant articles, and there's a lot of talk that's starting to come up with parking in East Arlington and parking in general. So I do intend to bring that up as an agenda item on our next meeting and see what, if any, action that committee would like to study relative to the parking issues that we've heard over and over again, particularly in the East Arlington area. And then I don't know that we're here yet, but I certainly want to talk to Mr. Chapdeline about getting a timeline and a feasibility to start transitioning towards in-person meetings. I know some localities are, but just seeing what that looks like. And, you know, what techn, technology we need would still be an option for both the public and members to participate remotely. But if, you know, there, there is a way to make our meetings work a little more streamlined, well, we're all, so at least some of us are sitting within the same room with, you know, P P and whatever's necessary to make us safe. I just want to see what that looks like and what a potential timeframe for is, is for that. So I'll talk to Ms. Chapdeline about that off air, but I just wanted to bring up that I'm, I want to start looking at that. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn at ten thirty.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, hi, Mr. Corsi, Attorney Hyne?
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Done?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you all.
Good night. Good evening. Bye bye.